Welcome to the Town Council meeting. It is May 11, 2020, and I am drawing this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is the call to order. The second is the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is a tradition that we've begun over the last couple of years. And this year, we've invited various groups or individuals to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when we're in studio. This year, or these recent months, we've not been able to do that. And so instead, we've created video compilations. And tonight, I'm proud to have us led in the Pledge of Allegiance by a really important group. And that is our Wakefield Memorial High School seniors, the class of 2020. This certainly was not the year that they expected for their senior year. I know that they're missing out on a lot of opportunities they've been looking forward to. And we just want them to know that we're with you, we're all together in this. And with that, WCAT, if you could please run the classmates from the class of 2020 in leading us in the pledge.
... To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Thank you, WCAT, for putting that together. And thank you to our seniors for taking part in that. The next item on the agenda is item number three. That is attendance, and I see that all seven councilors are in attendance for this evening. So with that, I'll move on to item number four on the agenda, which is public engagements. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address any members of the council. Prior to the meeting, I inquired as to whether we had any members of the public. We didn't at that time, but I'll ask again if there are any members of the public who wish to speak during this period. If you could virtually raise your hand through the Zoom technology or otherwise, let us know that you, in fact, are looking to participate. That would be great. All right, so I see actually
Yeah, Maria Castro.
And that is, yes. So Ms. Castro, if you wouldn't mind just unmuting, and then the floor is yours. If you could just state your name and your address, please.
Hello, everyone. I am Maria Isabel Castro, or most of you know me as Isabel Castro from 19 Charles Street. And I am here tonight representing the Wakefield Human Rights Commission. I am part of the subcommittee, of the Pride Subcommittee. And I sent a letter to Mr. Mayo on Friday after the agenda was posted. I'm sorry for the delay. So in the letter, we were asking permission to fly again the pride flag in the American Center. We are aware of the regulations, as it is necessary to have an event there to fly the flag for very important reasons that we agree. But we cannot have an event that year. But it will be very meaningful to our commission and to the members of our town to see the flag flying during that month. We will abide by all the regulations of size. We know that it has to fly under the US flag. And we are not going to be flying more than one flag. Because there was the talk of flying the trans flag, et cetera. We are going to abide to only one flag. So that's all what I want to say. I understand that your agenda is really full, and you may or may not vote for this in others. But I wanted to share our point of view, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Ms. Castro, for your comments this evening. And I'll just remind the council, we do have a few options relative to this request. It did not make it onto the agenda. And so at the appropriate time, we can either, as a body, decide to have that fall under a matters not anticipated within the last 48 hours, or we can decide to do a preliminary vote now and a confirming vote at the next meeting. But my understanding from last year, at least, was that this is something that is rather straightforward approval. But nonetheless, that would be the appropriate avenue to do that at the end of this meeting, if you so choose. Thank you for that. Do we have anyone else this evening with public engagement? Thank you. All right, seeing none, I'll move next on to item number five of the agenda. That's the approval of the April 27, 2020 meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes by a member of the council.
I moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the April 27 meeting minutes. As with all votes, there'll be roll call. So I'll begin Vice Chair Santos.
Yes, I was muted and unmuted, sorry.
No worries. Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And Counselor Butt.
Yes.
All right, and Chairman Dombroff, he's a vote of seven to zero. That motion carries. Thank you for that. Item number six on the agenda is COVID-19 updates. We have this evening a special invited guest. I asked John Smolinski, who is the Executive Director of the Wakefield and Field Chamber of Commerce, to come in and give us a bit of an update from the business and economic perspective. We've certainly focused a lot, appropriately so, on the health perspective of this pandemic. But I thought it would be also important, as we're hearing a lot of discussion as recently up today by the governor about a phased-in approach reopening up our economy, what the chamber is currently doing and what the path forward looks like. So with that, I'll introduce and say good evening to Mr. Smolinski. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you and the council for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening. As you all know, there is so much going on around the coronavirus, so many contradictory statements, so much misinformation, and also a lot of confusion. And one of the biggest jobs the chamber has had is disseminating that information as cleanly and as quickly as we can to the businesses of the Wakefield community. We've had a number of sessions that we've attended online, working with our members, things from the governor's office, things from Senator Lewis's office, from our state representative, from the Small Business Administration, from the federal government. There's so much going on, it's almost hard, it's overwhelming for a lot of businesses to keep up with what's happening. I know the two local financial institutions, the Cooperative Bank and the Savings Bank, have had their hands full with idle loans and PPP loans. And from what I can see, they've done a tremendous job for the community in serving those needs and in helping their customers and our businesses do the best they can to get some of that relief money flowing their way. A lot of confusion is going to be forthcoming. Now that the governor's come out with a four-step plan, how exactly that's going to be implemented? When it's going to be implemented? Who's going to affect that? There's so many questions that are coming with that. And my concern is that I recently read something from the Massachusetts Restaurant Association that they expect as high as 20% to 30% of some restaurants that are closed not to even reopen. So there's a lot of things out there for us to be concerned of. Far more questions than we have answers to at this current time. I think the community has responded very, very well. I am heartfelt to be able to share with you that the program we started not quite a month ago, the Wakefield Cards for the Community, has up this morning had raised over $19,000 in donations from the Wakefield community, the general public. We've served over 400 households. That money is going to allow us to buy almost 1,300 cards, gift cards from the local businesses. We've been able to buy somewhere between 40 to 50 businesses. We've got their gift certificates to put money back into the economy. So I want to thank Mr. Mayo and his office and the council for supporting that because that's an amazing amount of money in a very short period of time that's gone right back into the community. So heartfelt thanks to the Wakefield residents and businesses that have participated in that. And our hope is that we can continue that as we move forward. The program's still ongoing. The need still exists, as we hear there's more layoffs coming all the time. So we're going to work as closely as we can with the administration and with the council to find a way to bring businesses back onboard. I'm hoping, and a lot of the chambers are talking, everyone's talking, but we're trying to find a template that we can all use to bring businesses back online in a uniform and consistent way, not just in Wakefield, but in every community, so that we're helping one another. I had a conversation this morning with Bob Bradford from the North Shore Chamber of Commerce, one of the largest chambers in the area, not the Boston. And he himself said just this morning, the governor had to come out yet, that they haven't put any template together for all of their businesses as far as how they're going to reintroduce businesses back into the economy. There's all types of things that are being considered. Safety of the employees. There's a lot of questions about employer liability insurance. If they bring employees back and someone gets sick, where does that liability go? Who's going to be responsible? We're a litigious society, so we have to be cautious about that. Employee safety, employer safety, customer safety. I'd like to work closely with the council and the Health Department on putting something out that we all agree could be worked forward from the point of phrase one on through, from that point onward. I wish I could give you more specifics, but everyone's up in the air. As I said, local chambers are talking, the executive directors, and everyone's looking to have something to put out for everybody. And I'm thinking within the next week or two, we should be able to come up with something to work on prior to the 18th, when things start to open up. And we'll have to find innovative ways to try and help these businesses. I know in conversation with Mr. Mayo's office and other organizations in town, we've talked about trying to help the core businesses downtown and throughout the community. Obviously, everyone thinks Main Street and the center first, but we have to think of the entire town when it comes to those opportunities to bring businesses back. One thing I've mentioned to you, Mr. Chairman, and I mentioned to the town manager was, he had mentioned doing things that would bring people into the populated areas of the business community and maybe expanding out into the sidewalks. And something I'd mentioned that I'd seen in another part of the country is if we were to look at downtown and you wanted to expand, maybe consider closing a Central Street or a Princess Street and letting restaurants expand outside of their location. With Health Department regulations, I understand this is hurdles to overcome, but that gives them more than two tables on a sidewalk. Public kitchen puts two tables outside their door. It takes up sidewalk space, and they get two more tables. If we could pick the night and we can control the event, we close a Princess Street or we close a Center Street or whatever, we can control the street. We can work with the restaurants and rotate them around. There may be opportunities for other groups to help support those businesses that are opening if there's permits that are necessary. Those pop-up tents, we're talking about going up 10 by 10, 12 by 12, the rapid minutes, and they're down again. So I'm trying to think out of the blocks and offer opportunities for us to work with the community and with the town on helping these businesses find a way to expand their reach. And something of that nature, if we control it, it'd be like a downtown bazaar. People could come walking down. We wouldn't be closing off Main Street. We wouldn't be taking up sidewalk space. So it's just an idea, one of many we might come up with to help the community come back to life once again, when everything starts to return to sunsets and normal mobility. We've also done that thank you program with the signs. I want to thank the town manager for letting us put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. We were on page one of the Wakefield item tonight. So hopefully, that'll bring us some more. And the Money's Rights Day, we're going to go to COVID relief, and we'll find ways of putting those funds back into the community as well. As much as we've lost a lot of our programs to this point in town, at the time, we've been probably busier than before with everything we're trying to do communication-wise with the local businesses. So I'll leave it there for you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have. If I can be of any assistance, I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you very much. First off, Ms. Smolinski, thank you for all the work that you and the chamber have been doing. I know that, having spoken to you last week, there are a lot of really great ideas that you've been working on and a lot down the pipeline. So with that, I will turn it over to the council. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Smolinski or comments?
Mr. Chairman, you have Jonathan Chines and Anne McGonigal-Santos.
So I see Counselor Chines has his hand up, so we'll go with him first. Counselor Chines.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Smolinski, thank you so much for all the work that you and the chamber are doing. You mentioned the cards for the community program, which I think has been a tremendous success. I've seen the information that you've put out there, both in terms of connection to resources as well as some of the communication materials that you've been using to support our businesses. And so really appreciate all the work that you've done. You mentioned this idea of having these pop-up events or something where we use streets or sidewalks or other public spaces as a way to support reentry into the new normal for some of our businesses in the community. Are there other things that you can think of that the town can do to support our businesses, particularly at this time when we're in uncharted territory in terms of what the next three to six to nine months look like?
One of the things I had mentioned to Mr. Mayo, and we've talked about following up on it, was, and it may fall into the chairman's conversation later on the Acre Mountain Development Committee, but working together, put together a survey, Counselor Chines, that we would send out to the businesses, asking them what it is they would require. Is it capital? Is it more health needs? Could we help them buy things in bulk, which we had discussed? So put it together, a survey of items that would give us information that might allow us to put together a plan that would meet some of those needs. Because right now, we're throwing shots in the dock. Every business is a little different. And if we did some survey, we might get a common theme or a common thread we could follow up on that would allow us to better answer your question and give us a direction to follow.
Great, no, thank you very much. I think that makes a lot of sense. And certainly, we'll be talking about staffing around economic development tonight, too, and could certainly see that as something that an economic and community development person could help support and put in place.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. We'll move next to Vice Chair Santos.
John, I just want to thank you so much for all the work you're putting in. I think you're probably finding out, like a lot of us, that working remotely is much more difficult and time-consuming than putting our feet on the ground. I proudly have one of your signs in my lawn, supporting your program. And the fact that you've raised $19,000 to go directly back into the town is amazing. What you said about thinking outside the box, that's the new normal. We don't even know what the box looks like. So I think your idea of getting heads together and really, the survey is a great idea to find out what our businesses need. So I just want to thank you so much and really look forward to. There's going to be some hard work ahead to try to bring our town back. But I know in talking to Steve, is that we're going to be willing and be flexible with certain things. Everyone has to. From the state on down, they suggested regulations might be a little bit flexible so we can move a footprint outside of a restaurant. So thank you very much for all your work and what the chamber's doing.
You're very welcome. And while it's on my mind with the recent round of layoffs that have come out, we're working with Senator Lewis's office. And Thursday, we just sent this out this afternoon, so you might have had it in your inbox, there is a session being run with Senator Lewis and the head of the Unemployment Division for the state of Massachusetts that will help identify what is being handled by unemployment, how people collect, how they qualify, who doesn't qualify. It's a free informal Zoom session. And anyone that hasn't received that, if you let Mr. Mayo know, he can notify me and I'll send it to you directly. Or anyone in the community? Again, it's free, it's open, it's directly with the state's unemployment office. So it's going to be with the experts and the professionals within the Commonwealth to answer those questions about unemployment insurance, benefits and such. And that's this Thursday morning. So if there is an interest and anyone would like more information, please contact our office or if any of the councilors let Mr. Mayo know, and we'll certainly get that information out to you.
That's good. I think that will be a very important program. Thank you for highlighting it. The next hand up I see is Town Counselor Butt. Counselor Butt, good evening.
Hi, John. I just wanted to echo what Jonathan and Anne said. Thank you so much. I think you and your team and your social media and just getting information out there has been really helpful. And I love some of the ideas you've come up with and agree that, I think, these times give us an opportunity to be more creative. And just the one ask, I'm going to just put it in there. I know it's your business model and you have members of the chamber, but we really need to look out for some of the organizations and companies that aren't part of the chamber, but those small hairdressers and the nail salons, and they make up the fabric of Wakefield, and they're not necessarily chamber members, but they're businesses in our community. And so as much as, and I know your signs are helping everyone, your businesses, I'm sure you're helping everyone. I just wanted to say that, just so we're all thinking about everyone, all the businesses throughout our town, because we have so many smaller businesses, the personal trainers and the gyms and the law offices of one, that maybe aren't big enough to belong to the chamber, but definitely are the fabric of our town. So just a little plug to remember those folks.
Absolutely, Counselor Butt, thank you. And I'd like you to know that in the round of funds that have been expended, first of all, that $19,000 that we raised goes directly into the account of the Wakefield Food Pantry. So there's no intermediary. It goes right into their account, direct deposited. And 50% of the businesses that we have purchased gift certificate from are not chamber members. So we've been very inclusive for everybody, and I'm glad you made that point because that's important for anyone listening to know, we haven't had exclusivity. We've opened and welcomed everybody, and I'm happy to continue to do that because a healthy Wakefield community is good for all of us, chamber and non-chamber, residents and businesses alike. So we've tried very hard to be inclusive. So I actually welcome your comment, and thank you for highlighting it.
I figured you were already doing it, I just wanted you to highlight it.
That's okay, that's all right, thank you. It's actually a plug, so I appreciate it.
Thank you for that, Ms. Smolinski. Do we have any other comments or questions for Mr. Smolinski? Seeing none, I would just say that I very much appreciate your work and your input on the Economic Development Council draft overview that I was working on with you last week. Thank you for that. I think you provided some really important insights, both in terms of our short-term goals and our long-term planning. And so I think your feedback was tremendously valuable in that regard. So thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Yeah. And then also, I had a really, really nice conversation with Mr. Smolinski last weekend. I'm just so impressed by his enthusiasm for our community. And so I thank you for that, and thank you for joining us this evening. If I see no other hands, we'll continue to move on with the COVID-19 updates. But again, with that, please accept our appreciation for all of your work and anything that the council can do to help, please let us know.
Thank you. And thank you again for welcoming me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Counselor Smith Galvin and I participated in last week's Breakfast Club, which is
Yes, I noticed a lot of empty people. They weren't there last week. I'm going to point to any fingers, councilors, but you know who you are.
And it was actually, I'll say
It conflicted with homeschooling, I got to be honest.
We had good 20, 25, 30 people, didn't we?
It was really impressive, I have to say. And it was just really great to hear from all different businesses. And everybody is in such different circumstances that it's going to be a challenge to bring everybody together. So thank you for that dialogue.
You're welcome. It was nice. Everyone was in pretty good spirits. I think it was good to connect once again. And I'll look back to see some of you next month at the meeting. Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of optimism, I think, in that meeting. I think Counselors Smith Galvin agree with that. And it was good to hear, because I know that our businesses are going through a really tough time right now, but there was optimism and hope for where we're headed. And I think your leadership really makes a difference, too, because you exude that enthusiasm and optimism. And that's really what we all need right now, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll continue our COVID-19 updates. I'll turn it next over to Town Administrator Mayo for updates more from the general town perspective. So good evening, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to again thank John Smolinski for all of his hard work. He's been a pleasure to work with. And I think we end up having our meetings in the parking lot now by chance, passing each other as we come in and out. So thank you, John, for all the work. And a great point by Counselor Butt. And that was one of the first things we talked about, that the Cards for the Community was open to everybody. So that's great to highlight that. They are thinking of everybody over there. Very briefly, on the town side, spoke with Ruth Clay today, our health agent, as I do multiple times every day. And her word of the day was stable. We seem to be very stable, both in new cases and what's happening. I think over the weekend, maybe three new cases in Wakefield. And I was very heartened to see a horrible number, another 670 people, or 669 in the state, but a lot better than it's been. So that seems to be, seems to be going better than what we can talk about. As far as some of the other items are concerned, in the beginning of this issue, we had a lot of trouble getting PPEs for our, everybody did, for our first responders. That seems to be going very, very well now. Everyone seems to be covered, and we keep replenishing the supply. So that's a good point. We are working on reopening plans. There's a, not only for the businesses downtown, but for the town buildings and services themselves. We do have a task force that's headed up by our Emergency Management Director, along with our health agent and others, that are going to put together a plan for when we do reopen and how we reopen, and that's coming very quickly. It may take everybody being tested, it may take everybody's temperature being taken, it may take a lot of items where people that come into Town Hall initially come by appointment only and are met in a kind of a secure area, making sure that people still socially distanced when they are, and of course, wearing masks. So all that's being put together, and there's a lot of conversation about that among my colleagues and among the state, and a lot of plans out there that we're all looking at all over the place. The other thing I wanted to, and of course, the business community. Tomorrow, we have a conference call with Lieutenant Governor. It's our Tuesday municipal call. So I will imagine that hopefully, we'll get a little bit more guidance than we did today with the governor's press conference. So hopefully, that guidance is coming out. Very briefly about the, oh, other thing on the health side is that the follow-up that's being done by our nurses, both school nurses that are working with us and the public health nurses, following up on how patients are doing that are recovering from the COVID-19 has really been amazing. And this is a great, great service that's being done. And thank you to the school nurses for really stepping up and helping out in this as well with the Board of Health. So that has really been going very, very well. And I spoke to some of the nurses who took time out of that to actually drop some of the masks over the week, last week. And they were so heartfelt about actually talking with people and how good they felt about it. They were telling me some of the stories. So really, really fabulous right there. And I can stop it right there for questions if you want. Mr. Chairman, I do see one hand up anyway.
Yes, so I see we have Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mayo. Just briefly, I wanted to touch upon the reentry task force that Mr. Walsh is leading up. Two questions related to that. One, can you confirm the scope of what they're looking at? I'm assuming it's not just Town Hall and public buildings, but also public parks and resources?
Yeah.
Some component of how we would apply some of the standards that the governor might be putting out as we think about when businesses are allowed to reopen? It is intended to be all-inclusive from that perspective?
All-inclusive, yeah.
Okay, great. Great. And so just the follow-up question would be, I would ask that we share drafts of that with this body as that goes through. I mean, I think it's such a rapidly evolving situation that I think it behooves us to have as many eyes on that as possible. So we know where we're heading, at least certainly to the best extent we can.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I would just say, Mr. Mayo, I know most people aren't aware of this, but you have been doing a tremendous job of keeping the council updated regularly. We get emails from you near Delhi, and there's a lot of really important information. So I thank you for that. So while these updates are important for the community, no doubt, and for the council, thank you for the continued dialogue that you have going on. So I think to Counselor Chines's point, that would perhaps be an opportunity where, as you're working through the process, just keeping a surprise that way. Because I don't want to give the impression that everything would have to come through the council at a meeting, because as Counselor Chines points out, it's so fast-moving, you need the flexibility to be able to be nimble with that. So thank you on that. Do we have any other, any questions or comments? No. Okay, seeing none, I just wanted to provide, I guess, the closing piece to this. I have been in regular communication with the Board of Health, specifically their chair, Laura Goraville, who is, she and her team have done a tremendous job from the Board of Health perspective. It's been really reassuring to know that they're as engaged as they are. She didn't think it was necessary for them to take part in this meeting this evening. She just passed along a couple of just very brief updates that she wanted me to make mention of. The face covering order that was issued by the Board of Health, the Wakefield Board of Health, has been rescinded. And I think everyone is probably aware of that, but she wanted me to make sure that that was clear to everyone. Because we have the state order now in effect, as to avoid any confusion, the Board of Health thought it was more appropriate to rescind theirs. So it's important to follow the state directive on that. And she also wanted to point out that this is a process, and with this state order, it's a process of getting people conditioned, from her perspective, to to wearing masks in those sorts of public settings going forward for probably the foreseeable future, at least the next several months. So she just wanted to really encourage everyone to think about this as more as a long-term strategy, rather than something that would be a quick passing. The most important thing the Board of Health is doing right now is they're continuing to do their case tracking. And she said that's really their primary job right now, and they're continuing to work on that. I also wanted to give an update. I touched base with Chief Scory as well. And Chief Scory, I asked him a few questions about, you know, where things are at. The department is good. He said morale is good. The protocols that he explained at the last meeting are continuing to be in effect. They have a reasonable amount of PPE, which they have availability for that. And they're just continuing to be smart about the way that they operate. And so they're finding great success with that, fortunately, because their job is already hard, and it's gotten that much harder under these circumstances. I did inquire of him of his comments related to concerns about domestic violence cases in town. I know that came up at the last meeting and and he was fairly confident that there isn't a lot of under-reporting from his perspective. He said that, again, he reiterated to me that in their experience, if cases are reported, it's generally neighbors that are hearing in the heat of the moment and then calling the police. So that's the majority of the cases that at least get reported. Now, that's not to say that cases don't go, the cases go unreported. Absolutely, they do, you know, certainly. But he raised as another concern that hasn't perhaps received as much attention, child abuse. And as he described it, we have tremendous school resource officers and your teachers and pediatricians and all the sorts of what DCF, they call fifty-one A reporters, mandated reporters. So when you don't have children that are going to school, going to the pediatrician, interacting with other families, then there aren't a lot of occasions where outside folks could see, you know, marked on a child or suspected abuse. And so our police, our school resource officer has, officers have continued to do a really good job of kind of checking in with families, just to make sure everything's good with children. But that's a real challenge for us. And so domestic violence is certainly a concern that is an ongoing concern. The child abuse aspect of this pandemic too is something that has perhaps not received quite as much attention. But it's really something that to him, and we had a long conversation about it, is something that we should all be mindful of. And there aren't easy answers or easy solutions for that issue, but it is something that I think even an awareness by all of us is important during these times. With that, do we have any questions or comments of the council? All right, seeing none then. That will conclude the COVID-19 updates. And again, those will certainly be ongoing, I would imagine, going forward. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, and this is our revisiting of fiscal year 2021 budgeting. As any of you who follow these meetings know, we went through all the department budgets, all the budgets of the town, and voted on them. Since that time, things have changed considerably from an economic standpoint. We've had some discussion in this body with Mr. Mayo about making some revisions based upon new projections of revenue and state aid. And based upon that, Mr. Mayo has done a really significant job of going through the budgets, speaking with department heads, and trying to make sure that we're able to balance our budget in a responsible way. And so with that, Mr. Mayo, I'll turn it over to you for that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and hopefully I'll be able to share a PowerPoint with everybody. All right, let's see. How do I go back? Okay. Can everybody see that? Yes. Okay, great.
We can, yes.
Great, thank you. So anyways, I'm really kind of sorry that we have to go through this exercise. But it is something that we need to do, and it's something that all of my colleagues and other towns are doing it. And we kind of talked, touched about it a little bit at our meeting the other the other day with the surrounding communities. So anyways, this is really a COVID-19 budget response. And we really are responding to a shortfall in revenue. And we'll talk about that in a little bit and where this is happening. It's happening, you know, nationally, it's happening statewide, it's happening townwide, it's happening in people's homes too. Whenever I look at these items and I'm looking at budgets, I do go with an eye to try to maintain the programs that we have. We've worked too hard over the years to establish a lot of programs, a lot of great social programs. I would like to maintain them. And there's an eye to that in here. Position ourselves for the long term, because we will come out of this. A lot of items are items of timing, timing on capital expenditures and timing of hiring across all departments. So just because something is not going to happen in July doesn't mean it won't happen in November, it won't happen next year. So it's really is a timing issue as much as a numbers issue. And I also look that we need to prudently maintain our reserves. It's something we work very hard to do. Helps us with our bond ratings, helps us when we go out on other projects. And I think it's important for even rainier times if that happens. Everything that I have in here today is also maintaining some of the larger projects that we've been talking about. They, some of them don't affect the budget this year particularly. But I am accounting for, you know, the possibility of the Public Safety Building, the road bond that we've talked about. High school is a separate issue, but we have an eye towards that going forward. And the Greenwood School roof that is still going forward with half of that being paid for by the state, it's important. So those are all safely in our capital plan as well. So I do want to remind the the Town Council and the public that we do have a reserve policy. We have a financial policy. Part of it is a reserve policy. We want to maintain certain levels of free cash, stabilization and the reserve fund that we do every year. Right now, you add all these up, or where we think we'll be at the end of this year is around ten million dollars in reserves between those three, stabilization being about three million, free cash about six and a half. That is somewhat contingent upon what happens between now and the end of the year and the timing of federal reimbursement money for any of the COVID-19 expenditures that we've made outside of the budgets. If that comes in July, it's not as good for our free cash number, but it is, it will be free cash next year. So I'm not particularly worried about that, but I just want people to be aware that that is an issue. We also have part of our financial policy is a budget policy. And I think it's there's a simple, there's a very simple part of it. It says budgets to be developed in current revenue, in which current revenues equal or exceed current expenditures. Kind of, kind of pretty basic, but I think that's something we like to keep in our back of our mind as we're going forward with this. So as we were going along our merry budget way, pre-COVID-19, one thing we did know is that real estate taxes for fiscal year 2021 would be around seventy-six point two million. Local receipts, although I carry a number of seven point two five million, the FinCom was carrying eight point two five million. Reality is that it would be in the eight point two five million dollar range. But that's kind of what we've been doing over the past few years. The Payment Lure Taxes Program from the Municipal Gas and Light Department, nine hundred and eighteen thousand. State aid was coming in at about ten point nine million. New growth, we had a two point five million. School Business Authority, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And that's the last payment on the Woodville School. So that's going to go away, but the debt will go away as well. So that's fine. Free cash, we would make up that deduction, that difference in the local receipts with free cash. So we were totaling about ninety-nine million dollars in revenue. Well, things greatly changed after COVID-19 came along. Real estate taxes are still the same, because we know that number. Our local receipts, we could carry a number of seven and a quarter. That could be lower. We really don't know what the landscape is going to be. But in meeting with the Finance Committee, what have you, that was a number they were somewhat comfortable with looking at. Wakefield Gas and Light, still nine eighteen on the pilot. State aid, I subtracted a million dollars on state aid, about ten percent. There is, I will say, there is some different views on this. Some people feel that Chapter Seventy won't be touched as much. We would actually be level funded from last year's Chapter Seventy. And unrestricted local aid would be cut even more than ten percent, maybe fourteen, thirteen, fourteen percent. If that happened, our cut in state aid would be a little bit less than I'm anticipating. That would be great to find that out. But we won't know that until we get a consensus number from the State House, and that may not be a while. Remember, the State House is looking at a couple of items, whether they're going to use their rainy day fund, which has I think three point five billion dollars with a B in it. How much federal funds are they going to get to be able to use as well? So those are items that they're weighing. I get and I look at a lot of revenue forecasts and what have you, and I kind of enjoy looking at them. And just to give you a flavor, Northeastern Think Tank, Northeastern University is looking at a probably a sixteen percent cut in state revenues from fiscal, from what the consensus was before COVID-19. Mass Tax Base is going with a fourteen percent reduction. I will say this, the one I like the best, and I think Jonathan and Marine will like this best, is the Center for State Policy Analysis at Tufts University, is holding with a seven percent reduction. I like them the best. So maybe they're very positive over there at the brown and blue jumbos. So hopefully, I hope that they're right. Let's put it that way.
Fortunately, there are a lot of smart people there, Steve, so.
I hope that they're right, Jonathan. I'm going with it. Free cash, would we use some free cash? But the total is around ninety-seven, ninety-seven million. So ninety-nine point four minus ninety-seven point three, there's a projected shortfall of two point one million. This is based on those numbers here. So how do we attack that? Well, we had our budget that we talked about at the tri board to go back. It was a hundred million dollar budget for the town. When we, and that was in October, November. When we came back to some actual numbers that this body actually voted on and was presented to Finance Committee, we were looking at a ninety-nine point nine million dollar budget. So a couple of things came in lower. The roads we put into a bond, that helped. Some other items came in a little bit higher on the operating budget side. But we were in the ballpark. So I felt, I felt pretty good after all that, that we had really managed it pretty well. Then this happened. So if we look at ninety-nine, almost a hundred million in budgets that we have voted on and approved, and a total projected revenue revised at ninety-seven point three, we've got a little deficit there of two point six million. And I'm looking at this in a couple of ways to attack this issue. I will go through them basically a little while, but a reduction in operating budgets of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand. Bifurcation of our capital expenditures. The Capital Outlay Committee has already met and voted to reduce their requests for in the June Town Meeting by about a million dollars. So that brings us down to about a million eight in total reductions. So we're looking at a potential deficit of eight fifty-two. Would we hit this with free cash? Would we look at some other things? We'll have to talk about that as we go forward. But this gets us halfway there. In November, I'd look at, I would have a firm new growth and a firm state aid number. We might look at reducing OPEB. We are very fortunate that we have embedded in our budget one point six, almost one point seven million dollar OPEB deposit into the OPEB account. I think we have about eighteen million in that account right now. We don't have to do that every year. We could waive a year to keep some of the things afloat. We could also use what's in that account to cover health insurance expenditures. And that's something that we've talked about with the Finance Committee. There was some talk at the state level about extending the funding schedule for retirement. As you know, we put money into retirement every year. There may be an ability to extend that schedule out a little bit, which would free up a little bit of money. Wouldn't be great, but it would help. Use some free cash, as we have in the past, and unfortunately, look at, you know, potential reduction in services. And I hope nothing that's too drastic, but those are things that we have to look at and probably more in November than anywhere else. So I also said that we look at future years. So it really depends on the shape of the rebound. What will we have for budget deficits? Could we have some budget surpluses, which is something we do do when we forecast? How does that affect our reserves? And what we really don't know is what are the COVID-19 new normal costs? Are we going to spend more money on cleaning items? Yes. Are the schools going to have to change how they deliver education? How are we going to have to change how we deliver services? And from the schools, I mean, are they going to go to double sessions because you can't have so many kids in a classroom? Are they going to have to spill out into different areas? And what does that mean? There really isn't guidance out there yet. So we have to keep that in the back of our mind. I kind of look at where the economy is going to go. You know, we talk a lot about this and you see some of these items, think it's a V shape, that we steeply declined revenue and they'll steeply increase. Some people are in that camp. There's a U, people that are U, which is kind of a more elongated recovery model, came down a little bit softer, kind of leveled off and increased a little softer. Some people think it's a W. It's going to go up and down, up and down as they're, that are flare-ups. Some people think that it's an L, where it came sharply down and it's going to level off for a while before it goes back up. That's kind of the one that scares the most. And that's, and that's if there is a long extension of the stay-at-home advisories and business closures. So that is, that is something that we need to think about. I am a Nike swoosh guy, the more I think about it. Recovery will be characterized by a slow and steady pace through 2021, after this little sharp decline. And I think that takes into account a loosening of stay-at-home advisories and business closures and businesses reopened in a slow and gradual, methodical manner. I think that is what's going to, going to happen there, myself, anyway. So I have come up and the council has seen this with a number of suggestions that I would say, I would reduce the Town Council budget by ninety-five thousand dollars, and that is the economic development position, maybe looking at that later in the year. Reduce the police budget by thirty-eight thousand, and that is basically what we budget for the Fourth of July parade overtime. Reducing the DPW budget by a hundred and ten thousand, which is not filling an administrative position, which is twenty-one thousand five hundred. We have a couple of retirements in some positions there. I would suggest that we fill those retirement positions, but we don't backfill behind it. So you will see some union people that will move up, and then entry level, we won't do. And also, the other position is the construction supervisor position, which hadn't been filled yet, was in the budget. We kind of changed that area a little bit, that those those items will be, will be falling on one of the other positions in there now in the short run. And also, I would reduce overtime and details by ten thousand dollars in there, because again, we're not going to have those large events like the Fourth of July Parade, and that has a lot of, it's a lot of overtime there. I'd also reduce the health insurance budget by a hundred thousand dollars. That is in new plans, new health insurance plans. I am a little bit hesitant on this one, but again, we could use OPEB money. We could replenish this in the fall if we needed to. And speaking with Catherine McDonald, and I hate doing this, but there may be some items in the library that again are unnamed library substitutes and pages at the library that maybe we could, we can have to look at that for a year, reduced by fifty thousand dollars. I have been in contact with the school department regarding our reductions of four hundred thousand dollars in their budget, and that's up to them. And I would leave it up to Catherine McDonald and the trustees as well on hers. So that brings us down to about seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars. The last thing I would say, people do, people that really like percentages, there's a, this reflects that we're going across the board about a three point three percent increase in our overall operating budget from last year. The town side would be at two point two percent, and this would include the three contracts that are outstanding right now with three of our unions. And the schools would be around four percent. So this isn't, these aren't fun things to do, but I want to thank Dan Sherman, Finance Committee. We've talked through those. Kevin Gill, of course, and John McCarthy, Town Treasure, we've gone through these. I will say this, our cash flow is good, which is excellent. We are collecting for fiscal We are collecting for fiscal year 2020 in a very good, good manner. But this is a start. I'm hoping things will change when we get to November and we're either adding back in some items or not looking, not looking as bleak as it is, as it is today. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayo, for that detailed presentation. With that, I will entertain any questions of the council this evening. Yeah, I see Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, just a question from a process standpoint. Are we intending to sort of go through each of the items that Mr. Mayo laid out individually? Or should we open up for kind of comments and questions on all of those now?
My thought was that we would perhaps just talk in a broader sense first and then narrow it down from there, if that pleases this body.
Okay, great. No, I'm, I'm fine with that. And just broadly, just want to, first of all, thank Mr. Mayo for all the work that went into this. I, I know in conversations of the last few weeks, this has involved a lot of effort from a lot of different individuals. You know, while there, I think some specifics that I, I want to talk through as we go through each item. You know, certainly in terms of the approach, Mr. Mayo, that you've taken, I think it's very sound. I'm inclined to agree with you in terms of the shape of where we think the recovery will be. And so certainly it's, you know, we've got a lot ahead of us. But again, really thoughtful process and, and really reflects, I think, some, you know, difficult decisions, but I think important discussions that you've had within the, the administration over the last several weeks.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Chines. Do we have any other comments generally? Seeing no others then, perhaps Mr. Mayo may make the most sense for us to, to walk through each of the votes that you've identified in your presentation, so everyone could, could turn to that PowerPoint page. It's identified as votes needed. So we'll be taking several this evening.
You want that back up on the screen?
Why don't, why don't we not put it up just yet? Does everyone have it in front of them?
No.
Yes. See, oh, nods, okay. So with that, the first vote would be to reduce the town council budget by $95,000. This is number one. And this relates to the Economic Development Director position that Mr. Mayo had touched upon. So with that, do we have any preliminary questions for Mr. Mayo? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. If it's seconded, we'll then have discussion on this specifically. So if I'm seeing no preliminary questions, then I'll entertain a motion to reduce the town council budget by $95,000 as it relates to the economic development position.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. So with that, I'll open up to discussion. So this will be discussion specifically on this motion as relates to the $95,000 expenditure for that, that new position. Do you have any comment or question of the council? Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I want to speak, actually, this is probably the one piece of Mr. Mayo's presentation that I, I do have some concerns over. You know, obviously, we're in a challenging time as we think about the forecast for fiscal 2021. It, it's important for us to be careful. It's important for us to be fiscally responsible. But one of the things about being fiscally responsible, I think, is that we can't afford to be penny wise and pound foolish. And I do feel that this is a, a potential reduction that falls into that category. You know, we, we talked about, you know, earlier during Mr. Smolinski's presentation and previously, around the need to support our businesses in town. They're both a vital part of our community, but they're also a really important part of our tax base. And so as we think about what recovery looks like, not only is important so that, you know, we've got the resources in our community available so that we're able to go out to dinner and patronize the businesses that we're used to patronizing, but for us to be able to maintain and in fact grow our tax base over time, it's really important that we've got resources available to help our businesses do that. You know, as we think about what this position can be, and I think the intention behind it, it really affords us an opportunity to create a climate in Wakefield that's friendly to small businesses that will allow us to be in a position to grow over time. And I think especially now, when businesses are struggling, when this is precisely the kind of position that other communities may be cutting back, I think it's a great opportunity for us to put ourselves out there as a town, as a municipality, that's really welcoming businesses, is welcoming investment. And I think that will pay us dividends over the long term. So I, I would, I'll be voting against this reduction. I, in talking to Mr. Mayo, I, I think there are other areas in the budget that we can make reductions to make up for the $95,000 for this position and would respectfully ask my other counselors to consider opposing this and fully funding the position for fiscal 2021.
Thank you for that, Counselor Chines. Next, I see Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what Jonathan said. I, and I think I said this in the last meeting, I think that this is really a critical time for us to be open to new ideas. Listening to all of the small businesses on the chamber call last week, we're really going to need to help them not only kind of navigate coming back, but as we attract new businesses, navigating permitting processes and, and, you know, kind of laying out what our vision for economic development is in the community, but also kind of our community values. And as we know, this position is replacing the position of the town planner. So I, I do worry a bit and, and Steve has comforted me and I take great comfort in the plan he has. But I, I feel like kind of losing a town planner and then not having an economic development person leaves a bit of a, of a hole in, in kind of expertise that we have in town hall. So I would really, I feel very strongly that we do fund this. It is a significant amount of money. I understand the pain we're all going to have in this budget, but I think that this in the long run will pay the dividends. It will be a smart decision, so I will also be voting against this cut.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Smith-Galvin. Next, I see Counselor Dinoco. Good evening, Mr. Dinoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of you know that over the last, say, six years, I've been chasing the Economic Development Director's position in several fashions and in multiple meetings. I do appreciate Mr. Mayo giving us such a detailed breakdown of the budget. I usually am in full support of all budgetary items. This go around, I think I'm going to stick with my principles. I am in deep fear that if we do not put the Economic Development Director in place now, we will not see one until December of this year. And that is six months out. So I would be more in favor of removing the $95,000 from the reduction, lowering the 793,500 to 6,900, 698,500 and putting the $95,000 back into the town council budget to fully fund that position now, not in November. We need that position in place right now. That's my honest opinion on this. An economic development position would help us get into the right match with the state in regards to reopening this town. We're looking at right now, based upon what the governor said, we're looking at maybe June, July before businesses are going to be able to allow, restaurants are going to be allowed to get into the restaurants. They're still not going to be allowed inside right away. That's what I got out of that meeting today. Only the first, no person-to-person contact is the first wave. So restaurants are still remaining as is, even if we opened it as of the 18th. So that tells me we have time to put that person in place. From my understanding, we already have applicants in place because the job is already posted, one offer bid. So I think that's a crucial component. Along with the building inspector, those two are the highest position, highest profile positions that we need to focus on now to make sure that they're in place by July 1st. Both of them are highly necessary for our development moving forward economically. So I would be in favor of putting the money back into the budget and removing it from the reduction and as stated. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Dinoco. Next, I see Vice Chair Santos.
Steve, can I ask you a few questions on this?
Yes, of course.
So I find myself kind of going back and forth because I, I appreciate what Jonathan and Julie have said and Paul's reasons as well, although I would not be jumping quickly to fill the position because I think there's a lot of interesting people out there who are not leaving positions they're in because of the COVID-19 crisis. And I really want to make sure we get the, the best person. But Steve, is there, could you maybe explain some of the reasons why you want to take this out? And do you see a compromise? Is there something that's between not filling it and filling it? Because I, I very much trust your instincts on these points. And I, I just want to, I just want to wonder if there's, if there's another way to come at it.
Yeah, well, well, first of all, I, I agree that this is a great position. I mean, and we fought hard to get it, so my, my heart is there. But I've had some conversations with Mass Business Development to talk about them, how we could lean on them in the interim to help put some items together, whether they're, you know, we talked about surveys and what have you. We don't know what the new, new normal is going to be, and that may kind of change what we would be looking for in a person. The people at Mass Business Development have kind of indicated to me that you may not get the best cream of the crop right now because people are kind of afraid to move. Maybe afraid to move because what if things get worse and you're first one in, last one in, first one out sort of thing. I would also lean on the MAPC for planning assistance in, in items there. So I would, I mean, I would certainly, and, but I will say this, we're not going to, I would not want to hire somebody who isn't good anyway, even if they're filling it next week. So I, I think because we really don't know what the new normal is going to be, I, I would like to go carefully in here to make sure we do get the right candidate. I also think it's important that we do set the tone that, you know, there is some sacrifice that's going to have to happen here across all disciplines, whether you're this position, whether you're the school department, whether the library, whether you're DPW, police, fire. I mean, there are things that we have to look at. And, and you know, everyone, you know, not everyone got what they wanted. I mean, you know, when you look at the capital items and things like that. So I, I would just go carefully. I think, I think things will be breaking at the end of the summer, hopefully. Hopefully, things will be breaking and maybe we could add this back in in November, which is, which is a compromise that I think that Counselor Santos was asking for. But for those positions, those reasons, I just would, would go kind of carefully. The other thing is, is that what people don't understand is that if we hired somebody and then had to let someone go later on, town self, municipalities, they self-insure on, on unemployment insurance. So when you cut an existing position, and let's just say for the sake of arguments, it's a $100,000 position, you're probably, you say, well, I netted $100,000 in your budget. Well, you don't because you pay unemployment insurance. So maybe you netted, you net 54 because of that. So because you're paying the insurance, insurance cost. So for those reasons, I, I would, I would go cautiously.
And just as a follow-up. As a follow-up with regard to if town planner is not coming, we're losing a town planner to retirement, I believe, or is, is that for sure? Okay. So is that with salary-wise, how does that affect this?
Oh, that, that, this was basically a wash in the salary. This is, this is basically a wash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you.
Question, you're good? On this, from my perspective, I own a small business. I have multiple employees and I can't think of a business or I have not heard of a business that at a time when revenues are lower, expenses are, are looking to go up with, you know, creating a new position. And I think it's, it's just not, not the time to approve this. I think we have ample opportunity. It's obviously a priority for all of us. I think that's, that's not even a question. I think it's more a question of timing, as Mr. Mayo said. And Mr. Mayo, to be clear, we're not just talking about $95,000, that's the salary. But when you build in the benefits, the whole benefits package is about what, about a 30% on top of it? So we're talking really about 125 kind of balls in for this.
Assuming, you, you never know what people are going to get, but assuming that, you, you do kind of in your mind, think of another 30%.
So you figure, I mean, I think it's like 123.5 or something. So if you, 125,000 we'd be looking at at this time. I think that, that our messaging would be awfully inconsistent as a council. If we were to look to add on new position at a time where we have reached out to all the other departments and asked them to make cuts and make sacrifices, we're not filling new positions. That's been basically the town policy. That's what our town administrator has done. So the idea that we are somehow the, the exception to the rule doesn't, it doesn't feel right. I don't think we should be doing it. I do think that we can reassess, this can be brought up at town meeting in, in November. And if that's the appropriate time to do it, then we do it then. I, I disagree that the, it, the position is required to be filled immediately for all of the reasons that Mr. Mayo had, has laid out. And ultimately, this, this is a, this, the heart of, of what this person is doing is, is a lot of marketing and sales. And I think we'll have a lot of opportunity to hire on people at the appropriate time. I don't think this is it, and I'm really concerned about the bad messaging. And it, it doesn't make any sense, I, I don't, to hire now. It does make sense at the appropriate time. And if we can sacrifice this for the short while and then bring this person on when, when the economic conditions have improved, I think we're far better positioned. But to be telling everyone across town that you should be cutting, that we're trying to be fiscally prudent to make sure we can weather this economic uncertainty, but at the same time, bring on a, a new person for a full-time and adding to our headcount, it doesn't make sense. We're really fortunate that Mr. Mayo hasn't been talking about things like layoffs or furloughs. And, and I pray that that continues to be the case. But I think we're heading into very uncharted waters from an economic standpoint going forward. And I don't think any of us are in the position to bring on, again, a known fixed cost that's just going to increase over time. So to the extent that we can at least defer this, and, and I'm not minimizing the position. I, I hear all of you and, and, and I agree that at the appropriate time, this person will be a tremendous value add. I just think we need to wait until we have a better sense of where we are going forward. I see Counselor May with his hand up. Counselor May.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't speak too much since I can, but both sides have great arguments. I'm leaning with Ian Seaver now because I think I'm inclined to wait, save the $95,000. But certainly, position, position is well-needed. I think we have to be able to cut and narrow areas. I think this has to be delayed for a while. So I don't go with Steven Ian. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor May. Counselor Butt.
Hi, so you know, we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago when Steve mentioned it. I think, you know, I agree with Paul, we've all been talking about an economic development person for a bit. Ed, I'm going to disagree with you, this isn't a marketing-sales position. That's never what it was envisioned to be. It actually, you know, somebody who really can come in and really implement some of the ideas that we've talked about, that we've had business proposals and strategic plans about. And I, I think it's belittling it a little bit to say that it's a sales and marketing job because it's really not. All the good ideas that John mentioned from the chamber before, like, and you know, we hear about them, what other towns are doing. I talked about it last. and, you know, we hear about them, what other towns are doing. I talked about it last week, closing off streets, the pop-up event that John talked about. There's a lot of towns that are looking at letting people have seating in their parking lots. Like, we need someone who has the time to think about those. You know, in Bedford, this position has brought back four times what they pay the person. And Steve is going to be busy doing the day-to-day implementation post-COVID, like he's done all along and a great job all along. But we need someone who's dedicated, who has the economic experience, who has the ability. And I just, I also just, and, you know, we've talked about it, and Steve and I have talked about it when the job was posted, and it's already been posted, people have already applied for it, that, you know, this is not just about businesses. This is about our community, our, like nonprofits, our arts, our culture, somebody who really can incorporate all of that. And we don't have that. And with the planner leaving, there's going to be a big void. And so I really encourage, it's not a new position. It's not, you know, it's, it's a, it's a hole that we had. Paul's been talking about it for nine years. I know, three years ago, we all talked about it. Every single person here has talked about this position as they were running. And I know it's, it's difficult times, but I really think to get us back on track. And everyone, everyone's going to be in the same position, but having someone who dedicated time to that, I just think it's an opportunity we can't afford to waste right now.
I'll remind this body that we're talking about a $2.69 deficit here. And so it's not a question of whether there's, there's value to this position. I think we've all agreed to that. The question is, when we responsibly are to fill it. And that's, I think, really what the question was before this body. Mr. Mayo has suggested, we put this off, this same body will be representing Wakefield in November. So I don't think that our feelings or sentiments will change about the importance of the position. But I do think it's important that we be mindful of the economic realities to doing it now. With that, I see next Counselor Santos. Vice Chair Santos.
That's okay. I answer to either name. I also wanted to echo a little bit of what you said, what Maureen said. I don't, I think this position makes sense. I do look at it as more of a, much more than marketing and sales because I helped write the position with Paul. I, and I also appreciate, my biggest concern, so I'm probably, you know, could go down in flames, but that's okay. I am worried that we are in such a fluid situation and I'm not, and we're not quite sure what the future is going to look like, which is why I would be hesitant to vote for this position now. I have also, like Paul, been arguing, not arguing for this position. I've supported when this position has been brought up for the last several years. Without COVID-19, I'm first in line to say this is what we should do. I mean, I helped develop the position. I just am very nervous about not knowing what the immediate future looks like for us. And coming back in November, we'll have a much better idea. But, you know, I, without denigrating either side, I see all the arguments. I think the arguments are excellent. I just, I'm a little nervous in pulling the trigger on this position.
Chair Santos, I see Counselor Chines.
Thank you. And certainly, just to echo Counselor Santos, I think, I absolutely agree. I think everyone on this council is very aware of the fiscal situation that we're in. I don't think that anyone takes that lightly. And certainly, you know, we, we all want to be careful with the decisions that we're making. You know, with that being said, I think there are a couple of realities for this particular position, which I think are different than some of the others. First of all, it is not a new position. It is a replacement for the town planner. You know, we've modified the job description thanks to the hard work of Counselor Santos and Counselor Danako and Mr. Mayo. But it is not a new position. We are not adding headcount. It's a question of whether we reduce headcount by this individual or not. You know, secondly, you know, funding the position does not mean that we mandate that someone is hired, even if they are not qualified on July 1st. And so I am certainly sensitive, Counselor Santos and Mr. Mayo, to the comments around the labor market dynamics and, you know, are we going to be able to find a qualified candidate? We may not be able to, but I would say for this position and any position in the town, you know, what's important is that we find someone and recruit someone who can do the job. And if that person's available July 1, if we go, if we choose to go forward with funding, then great. If it's not, we have to wait until we find the right person. It does not serve our community well if we bring in the wrong person. And I don't think the decision on whether to fund this in the budget changes that dynamic. Just the final point that I want to make, you know, I also am very supportive of engaging mass development and MAPC to the greatest extent possible, whether this position exists or not. I think that there are a lot of great resources available to our municipality that, you know, we have leveraged in the past. And I hope we continue to do so and continue to find new opportunities to do so in the future. You know, we talked about, for example, with the MAPC technical assistance grants that they could provide us support with. But I think one of the challenges that we've got to recognize is that there are certain things that mass development and the MAPC can't do for us. They can't replace the staffing function that our town planner and what I would expect this new position would have in terms of being the staff support for the planning board or the conservation commission. They can't execute the survey that Mr. Flinsey mentioned. That's something that, you know, we would need the support to do. They can't necessarily be the resource when, you know, someone wants to open a coffee shop in town and they're looking for help navigating the regulations and requirements of doing that. You know, similar to something that I've heard from, from a prospective business owner in the last several months, and I know other counselors have as well. They can't do that, that sort of handholding and that, that coordination with them. They can't think proactively about how to engage with some of the business owners in town or some of the property owners to figure out how do we leverage the resources that we have more fully. There are a lot of things that they can do. They can help us with planning and strategy, and they can help us with sales and marketing, and that's great. And again, we should be taking advantage of that. But what we need is someone to pull all of that together in a coordinated, effective, and thoughtful way. And if we can do that, the other benefit of this position, it is, it is that it is potentially revenue generating. And there aren't many positions in town government where that's the case. So I certainly hear all of the caution. I think if we were a community that was not in the position that we're in, where we do have a good amount of reserves that give us some stability as we're weathering a storm like this, we probably would have to have a different conversation. But the fact that we have managed our finances prudently means that we can, you know, continue to invest where we need to during the downturns. I think that's the situation we find ourselves in today. And I think that's why it makes sense to move forward with this position.
Okay, I'm just cognizant of time and seeing that we have a number of votes here with this. So are there any, I mean, I think everyone has certainly made good points on both sides. I think a lot of the points have highlighted the fact that we support the position. This, to me, presents as more a question of timing for it. Counselor Danako?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is directed to our secretary of the meetings, to Ms. Dalton. So my question is, what is the actual motion that is before the council?
Mr. Counselor Danako, there's not a motion. The motion before the council is to reduce the town council budget by $95,000. That's what, that's what we're discussing.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for clarifying. So just in one last comment on my behalf, I think I'm going to echo in support of what Mr. Chines had to say. This isn't a brand-new job. It's to fill an existing job that is going to become vacant June 1 or June 5. So it's not that we're creating a new job. We're replacing an existing job with a more important position, which will have more abilities than what the previous job had and have a better benefit to the overall community of Wakefield. So with that said, I'll anticipate the rest of the vote, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Danako. I should point out, I've worked extensively with our town planner. This job description is not the job description of our town planner. I can say that with certainty. It's very different, and that's by design. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's accurate to say that we're just whopping out, you know, it's not a new position. This is a new position. This is a different direction that we're going in as a town. This, this job description is different than what the town planner has done in function in, at least in recent years on that. Seeing no further hands up then, I will entertain, or actually, we have a motion and second. I'll conclude discussion then, and I'll take a roll call vote. So with that, I'll go one by one. Counselor Chines?
No.
Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
No.
Counselor Butt?
No.
Counselor Danako? Counselor Danako?
No.
Is that a no?
No.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes. So four to three vote, the $95,000 stays within the town council budget. Just a question on that, Mr. Mayo. The, the benefits piece, is that reflect, where is that reflected? The benefits for the $95,000?
That's, that's not. That, that's, we carry money in the health insurance budget for new, new policies, for new, new clients every year. That was already in that budget that was approved.
Thank you. All right. So the next vote that I'll entertain a motion on is a reduction of the police budget by $38,000.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, the motion before you is a reduction in the police budget as described by Mr. Mayo in the amount of $38,000. Again, I'm sorry, we have to do roll call votes for each. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin? Counselor Danako?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, that motion carries seven to zero. That reduction is made. Next is the vote to reduce the EPW budget in the amount of $110,500. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Same.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, then counselors, the motion before you is the reduction in the EPW budget as described by Mr. Mayo in the amount of $110,500. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Danako?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, vote of seven to zero, that our reduction carries seven to zero. Thank you for that. Next motion I'll consider is a reduction in the health insurance budget in the amount of $100,000, as outlined by Mr. Mayo. I entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos. I think Counselor Danako just got in there. Do we have any discussion? All right, seeing none, the motion before you is the reduction of the health insurance budget in the amount of $100,000. Counselors, roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danako?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, seven to zero, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. The next vote is a reduction in the library budget in the amount of $50,000. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Same.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Do I have any discussion? Our counselors, the motion before you is the reduction of the library budget by $50,000, outlined by Mr. Mayo. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Butt? I'm sorry. Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Danako?
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, seven to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Next is, actually, Mr. Mayo, I'm not, I'm not sure.
That's a school committee.
Yeah, that's a school, that would be school committee. So we, we encourage them to look at their budget as well. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a brief comment on this piece?
Is it related to the school budget?
Yes. So, you know, I, I've, you know, spoken with Superintendent Lyons, and I know that they're working diligently on coming up with some options to get to the $400,000. One thing that I just want to mention, and I think this is an area where certainly the school committee, and I think as a town, we're going to have to have a lot more discussions, is I think the schools face probably more unknowns when it comes to recovery than almost any other part of, of the town. You know, there's the question of what does the physical distancing look like if school goes back? Hopefully, when school goes back in the fall, you know, do we have to have two shifts of students? You know, we're in a situation where, you know, a lot of kids, well, all kids right now are being homeschooled by their parents, which certainly, if I, as a parent, am any indication, is not an ideal situation, to say the least. And so, you know, there's a lot of work I think that's going to come in in terms of academic catch-up and extra help. I think the social and emotional aspect of this is also something that's really going to weigh in large. And so I just want to put it out there. I think, you know, I know that Superintendent Lyons and his administration, and I'm sure the school department or a school committee are taking the situation seriously. I just want to make sure that as a community and as a council, we're aware that I think there's a lot that could change in that area between now and September and certainly the November town meeting. And I think it's something that we've just got to make sure that we're all cognizant of that. You know, the, the job for our schools is not going to be the same in the fall as it is today in so many ways.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item number eight. This is item for the counselors to consider the creation of an Economic Development Council. I had races at the last meeting, and I had been in discussions with Mr. Mayo on this for some time. Also, I very much appreciate the, the input and guidance from Mr. Smolinski on this from the chamber. I did a good amount of research into economic development councils that are in other communities, and laid out here is a pretty detailed description of the various directions that they could go in. I think the, the bottom line is, it's, it really depends on where our local economy is at and where the most value add is. The goal, I think the primary goal or objective, and again, this is in everyone's packets, and it's available for everyone to read online on our town's website. But the goal would really be to try to bring together different members of our community. So it's not, it's not a committee or commissioner board like a lot of others. But it's really trying to pinpoint specific people with business, with business experience, perhaps business owners, business executives, business residents that are involved in business development, have marketing experience, bringing in organizations like our chamber, like the Community Partnership, like Main Streets, but also bringing in people like residential real estate lending experts. Because there's a lot that can be gained from what is happening in other communities based upon what they're seeing, what they're experiencing. And this, I think, would, this council would work hand in glove with the Economic Development Director. I think it would not take the place of that person, but instead would be a value add. And I'm really trying to tap into, we have, we have some incredible CEOs in town. There's a lot of untapped town resources. This costs our town nothing. It would bring together, my hope would be a lot of great minds. I've already been talking with Mr. Mayo of some of the people that would really probably best fit this description and trying to encourage them to take, you know, some time out of their busy schedules to, to be involved with this, with this effort. And I think we can see this go in a lot of different directions. There have been talk of different surveys and the like. I'd also like to have a good understanding of, of market trends, but also opportunities that we have with people that are well-positioned to be able to make those things happen. You know, certainly, if you own a multi, you know, a million or Fortune 500 company or some other larger business, you've got a great rolodex of contacts. And I think this council could really help to connect a business development director with a lot of outside contacts. So I don't see any, I don't see any negatives to it, but I see a lot of possible, you know, really great opportunity for us as a community. And again, I think we're able to tap into a different segment of our residents, a segment that we haven't always tapped into. Again, those at the highest level or most expert in their respective fields. So I would really encourage everyone to support this. And I know in speaking with Mr. Mayo, there are a lot of good opportunities that this position, that this council could, could present to us. And what's the harm? It is the bottom line. There's tremendous benefit. And again, it doesn't cost us anything to do. So without, entertain any questions or thoughts anyone may have on this body.
Hi Ed, I think I threw my hand up.
Vice Chair Santos, yes.
I, I look at this council as something like the governor appointed a few weeks ago with regards to bringing in top folks from business to think outside the box. As John said, I think we have to think about things a little bit differently. And I would expect John to be a member of this, adding something else to his plate. He certainly should be on this.
He's already agreed, so I talked.
Without a doubt, Chamber should be there and, you know, a restaurant owner who has several restaurants or something. I think we, if we don't like it, we disband it. We've done this with committees before. We're not, if it doesn't work out, but why not tap into some folks in our community who have been involved in the past, but have a wealth of experience in running businesses and thinking about things from a much bigger picture? We could have someone, you know, who certainly has a nonprofit interest, just to make sure that that concern is on there as well. But I don't see the harm. I agree with you. And I, I think it doesn't have to look like committees that we've had in the past. I wouldn't have every community group involved in this. I think this is a different type of committee. And if, again, it doesn't work, we end it. So I agree with you, Ed. In my mind, it doesn't take the, if we don't hire an economic development person right at all, this doesn't take the place of that person. If when we hire the person, the synergy isn't there, then that's, we go with our employee, certainly. So today, I don't think there's any harm in doing this.
I do think it also, there's been a lot of talk about the capabilities or opportunities for the economic development director. And this adds on nine resources for that person at no cost to us. So I think even, you know, leaning into these folks, I would want them to be at the top of their game. And I'd want them to be folks who are really, you know, who know how business runs, who knows, people who know market trends, who know that, you know, where things are headed and know, you know, how to offer some, some real expert professional, you know, guidance and, and, and resources. So I, I think that it's, it's a good opportunity. Do I see any other hand? Actually, I see two. I see Counselor Dinaco.
Counselor Dinaco. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask that we table this for further discussion and not vote on this tonight. And I'm going to give you my reasoning behind it. With all due respect, Mr. Chair, you have done a lot of research this, on this by yourself, without any involvement from the council. I would have loved to have been invited to sit down with you and the others to go over something like this and maybe come up with my own ideas of who might be best for it. You've already presented us with a game plan and already talked to several people about whether or not they'd be interested in filling the position, but aren't even seeking our council. So I'd like to have some further talk, and I really don't think tonight's going to be able to cover all the concerns that I have. So I'm going to ask, and I'll make the motion, that we table this to another meeting so that we can have a fuller discussion on the matter. That's my motion in front of you right now.
I did want to clarify, Mr. Dinaco, I have not been out.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the floor. You have to address that first.
Okay, and I will. I have not asked any, anyone, aside from Mr. Smolinski, about his, his interest or involvement from the chamber.
Mr. Chair, you're still talking. Please address the, the motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair, I second Mr. Dinaco's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chines.
So now, now we can move beyond. So I have a motion made by Mr. Dinaco, seconded by Counselor Chines. Now open to, up to discussion. So with that, I see Counselor Smith-Galvin, is that hand from before or after?
Um, I can talk to the current.
Sure, all right, please.
And if I'm out of order, let me know. I, I think, I mean, I think it's a great idea to get as many people involved in this as we can. I do have some hesitation, however. CEOs, we have members who are on, you know, big boards of trustees and everything. We know, it's getting their attention is very difficult. A CEO council, we really have to be very thoughtful in how we use their time and that we use it, you know, efficiently and leverage it the best we can. I guess my fear a bit is that without the economic development person on, we, you know, who's going to, who's going to manage these nine people? I think it's going to take a fair amount of, of management and just planning to really be able to utilize CEO time actively. And I also, speaking to Paul's point a bit, you know, thinking through who would be on this, I think we need to think about maybe a little outside of it, like childcare and, and other areas that are going to be really important into this economic environment. So while I'm really not against the council as a concept, I would kind of just value thinking some of those issues of it.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Smith-Galvin. I'm seeing Counselor Chines, is your hand up now or is that from before?
It is. And just very quickly, you know, I, I think that Counselor Dinaco and Counselor Smith-Galvin, you know, probably made my points more articulately. I, I just feel like we're putting the carton before the horse a little bit on this one. And I, I am very supportive of the concept of having an economic development council. I, I think anytime that we can leverage volunteers from the community to multiply the work that we're doing, I think that's a good thing. If we can focus that work in a way that is going to be productive and sort of respectful of their time and energy, I think it's hard to do that until we have sort of someone staffing the economic development position role. I think part of what I would expect that person to do is to lay out a, a framework, a set of goals for, for this committee, a set of agendas that make sure that we're using the time wisely. So I, I do hope we come back to this. I, you know, I certainly am not, I, I don't want anything that I say to be conveyed as not being supportive of the idea of an economic development council. I just think that we're not quite ready to move ahead with it.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Vice Chair Santos has her hand up.
I can hear the concern, certainly Jonathan and Julie's concern. But I, I would hesitate to not put this committee together until we have an economic development person, because I just don't know how easily that, that is going to be filled. Based on a lot of conversations I've had with folks who have, who are looking, who have that position in their towns in the body of folks that are out there that we, we really want to tap into. So I don't want to wait until we have the position to have the council filled, that, the committee filled. That said, I certainly don't have a problem tabling it for another meeting to maybe discuss or to think about who we might, what roles we want the nine people to have. I would not want to table it until we have a hire. I would be happy voting on it tonight, because I do think, you know, we have, we certainly have committees that work somewhat parallel to other positions in town. So I'm hesitant in not robustly talking about how to put together a group of really smart people in this town, whether it's to discuss daycare or to discuss the economic, economic outlook or real estate or restaurants. So maybe tabling it for a meeting, but I would have the expectation that I think this should be voted on before we have the position filled.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. Seeing no one else, what I've been hearing in, in recent weeks is, is the fact that we need to be supportive of businesses and trying to help them. And we're heading into a real uncertain, but we know, a difficult transition period when we start with these four phases that the governor's just outlining today. Part of the, I'll say the void that is currently in place is we don't have an economic development director and that person will not be, you know, hired for some time still. We do have businesses that are trying to, to get reestablished. And so I, I think that to the extent we can be all hands on deck with this, I think there's a cost to waiting for it. There aren't, this isn't defined as anything more than a body of nine. It identifies three business connected groups, specifically the chamber, Wakefield, Main Streets and the Community Partnership. But that means it's, it's six positions. And it's, you know, it's not saying that it has to be X, Y, or Z. But instead, it's putting it out there, explaining what we're looking to do, and then seeing what kind of interest level we get. And maybe it is a little, is it a bit more targeted in terms of going out to asking those? I know Counselor Chines, you in the past have talked about, I think last time you talked about all the great talent that we have and trying to be able to slot people as best we can. I mean, this is one of those opportunities. We, I'm respectful of everyone's time. We have Zoom now and that'll be the way of the land for a long while. Will that be continuing well after we've passed this? It's entirely possible. And could this council be one that ends up meeting via Zoom at, you know, at 12, at 12 noon on a Tuesday? Because that's what works for them? Yes, I think it could be. And we could still have the same public participation and the like, certainly. But I do think that there, there's no harm in doing this now, but I think there is a harm in not doing this now. Again, we can put, cast, this is simply putting it out there to see who we get. And then we, as a council, can decide who we think, you know, best, best fits what we envision going forward. And Counselor Dinaco, I will say that with respect to this proposal, there are proposals I've presented before this council all the time. And these are not generally collective proposals where seven counselors get together before a proposal was made. So I, I, I do disagree with you that this is something that, that, you know, I, I just worked on and it came to be. I had conversation with Mr. Mayo. I saw input from our chamber on this. I did a lot of research, as we often do when we propose any number of initiatives. And that's, that's not generally a collective thing that, that we do, but instead we bring it before this body, you know, to have further discussion on. That's, that's what it is here now. So I, I think we'd be, we'd be making a mistake if we don't try to at least get out there, because this too will take some time to, to come together, to get formed. And as far as the leadership of this, I spoke with Mr. Mayo. He at first had talked about taking over the responsibilities of the economic development director in, in the short while. But Mr. Mayo is certainly adept at being able to, you know, to run this kind of a council and help to facilitate, you know, their engagement, especially in the short term. Not seeing any other hands? Actually, Counselor Chines?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I just wanted to respond to something that, that you said, you know, there's, you mentioned there's not a lot of sort of definition in terms of the council or the individuals beyond a group of, of people. I, I think that kind of gets to the concern that I have and why I'm supportive of Counselor Dinaco's motion to table. I, I actually think we do need to put more definition around what this is before we can move forward, you know, with recruiting individuals for it. I, I think we need some more defined goals for the group. I think we need some, you know, more clearly defined expectations. And I think we probably need to think through, you know, what are the types of skill sets, capabilities, experiences that we want to fill in a body like this? And so I, you know, I, I don't want to suggest that, you know, by tabling it, we just ignore it for a period of time. I think there is work that we should be doing, but I think that work needs to happen before we decide to formally move ahead with an invitation to people to participate in something like that.
Just a point of clarification, Counselor Chines, there is a very detailed description of short and longer term expected focus. And it's deliberately broad, because the landscape, the economic landscape that we have is so uncertain. So it's, it's one of those where it is, it's deliberately intended to be fluid, as we don't know where, where the economy will be driving us, what sectors would be most impacted and the like. So this council's focus would have to be able to be nimble to, to adapt to whatever the most pressing needs are. And I know in talking with Mr. Smolinski, one of the things that he had pointed out is this kind of a body is able to focus well when it's focusing on just a few discrete issues at any one time. And he talks, he talked about, and I think it makes good sense, that there is nothing stopping this kind of core body from being able to bring on others, you know, in, in, almost, I'll call it almost like a subcommittee capacity, like, like an agile capacity, if there's a particular issue. So if there's something that is really pressing for the town, I'd say related to restaurants, for example, then perhaps they would then, you know, bring in a few folks that are in like a, like an ad hoc, like a subcommittee, to focus on those issues specifically, you know, because those, those would be folks that are experts. You mentioned childcare, say that's the issue. You bring in folks with that expertise. But to be able to kind of predict what direction things will be going in, I don't, I don't think it makes, makes a lot of sense in the same way that the economic development director position is deliberately broad. Because we don't know exactly what that, you know, what skill set the most qualified person will end up bringing in, and they're going to have a different focus. So I don't think this precludes us from being able to, you know, kind of have an ad hoc subcommittee to focus on a specific pressing issue that where that we can bring in, you know, top people that are top of their game.
I, I understand that and appreciate that. I, I, I read through it as, you know, someone who, you know, works as a senior executive for a fairly large organization, you know, someone who, you know, might be the target of a committee like this. And it felt very broad to me. And again, I just think as we think about how we use people's volunteer time, we want to make sure that they're, we're using their time productively. I think that there is a pathway where that could be the case with this council. I just think there's some more work that needs to be done before we're there.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Can I just get a clarification from Paul? How long are you asking it to be tabled? I'm muted.
I keep forgetting I'm unmuted. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not looking for indefinite postponement on discussion. I would rather have a few meetings to discuss it and then make a decision on it. But I, I would want some input on this, a little bit more than what I was just presented. So I agree with Mr. Chines, there's no harm in talking about it before we dive into it. So I would rather have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed and make sure that all seven of the counselors' issues are taken care of and addressed and then vote on it. So I'm not, I'm not saying what hire, we already discussed that the hiring of the director wasn't going to come forthwith. We won't be able to hire the director until July, until after the town meeting, because the money won't be appropriated. Okay, so I know they're going in. So we've got time to do more research on hiring that person. And if we have to put something like this into place, so be it. But that's not the will of the council. I'm only want a little time to go over this, have a discussion from the council and then make a decision on it. That's all I'm asking.
So if it's tabled for next, the next meeting?
If we can meet before then, yes, yeah. But I don't, so that means we'd have to have a meeting, a Zoom meeting with the council or we'd have to have a discussion somehow, or, or you're looking for a discussion and a vote at the next meeting?
We could. I'm just saying that I think it should be on the next meeting's agenda and we could all, for a discussion. And if there's a vote, there's a, people are comfortable with a vote. If not, then the vote can be the following meeting. So I just wanted to make sure you weren't suggesting that it be tabled until after a hire.
I, I'd have to hear, I'd have to hear what comes out of the discussion. I really would, Ian. I, 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 right now.
Right. Paul, let me just, let me just clarify. If your, if your motion is to table this until we hire, then I'm against your motion. If the motion is to table it.
I, I never said until hire.
Okay.
So, so, so that's not my original motion.
Okay.
My motion was to table it for further discussion.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, so whether, when that further discussion is over, then it could come for a vote in my eyes.
Okay.
Okay, but I didn't say until the hire. That was one of the arguments that was put in place.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Dinaco. So as I understand the motion that has been seconded, then the motion before you, counselors, is the tabling of this vote until a future point in time. Is that correct? I want to be sure that we're clarifying your motion, Mr. Dinaco, and I want to be.
No, no, I, I have to keep turning the mute button back on, Mr. Chair.
You do, as, as does everyone.
I've been told to shut it off at all times, so that's what I'm trying to do, babe. The motion that you had gestated is correct.
All right, and Counselor Chines?
Until another meeting is established by the.
And that's consistent with my second.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So we've now clarified that motion. Do we have any final discussion on that? If not, I'll just, I'll just say that while I respect everyone's opinion on here, I think you're doing our business community a tremendous disservice by kicking this out further. With that, I will take a roll call vote. First, Vice Chair Santos.
I'll vote to table. Yes.
Yes. So just to be clear, a yes vote would be in favor of table. So the Vice Chair Santos is yes. All right. Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor May?
No.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Okay. And Counselor, Chairman Dombrowski? No. So in a vote of five to two, this Economic Development Council formation has been tabled. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number nine. These are committee appointments. We have, I'm going to try to go through these quickly if we could. The first on the agenda is item nine A, and this is the youth council. Now, the youth council is something that has already come before this body. We have already approved its formation. And we have posted for interested applicants. We ended up getting in total 10 applicants at the high school level, and we have not received any applicants at the middle school slash junior high level. It's, the committee is ultimately made up of 11 people, but those slots were defined as high school, middle school. I will remind this body that anyone that has applied, any students that have applied are eligible to be members of the council. So the only distinction that we're drawing here is the eight voting members. That's the only difference. And that was very clear in our discussions and formation. So with that, I will entertain a motion to either accept a slate. We can take them one by one. I can offer you, I did follow up with Catherine Dingra, who is very, very tuned in with a lot of these students. She had, all of them actually, she had, well, only thing to say about all of them. And so I could go through a little bit of that. We've all reviewed the resumes already. So if we don't have a long discussion, it's because we've already reviewed the resumes. But I'm happy to have as much discussion as is needed. Again, we would, all 10 of these people will be on this youth council. Eight of them will be voting members. So if you want to say, you know, segregate out two and say those two will be associate members, we can do that. We could take them one by one again, or we could take them as a slate or a partial slate, whatever the will of this body is.
And is there a way for the committee, if we appoint all 10, to decide who the eight are and the two? Or do we have to do that?
We actually have the, we have the appointing authority. So it's, it would be like any other where we would have to identify who the eight are. That would be, that's how we've done it with, to be consistent with how we approach all. I can say that one of the issues that Catherine Dingra did raise with me was just to be aware that all of these are very bright and very articulate folks. Some of them are a little bit more committed than others in terms of having a lot going on. And that might be something we may want to be mindful of in terms of not taking up too much of their time specifically with, you know, with, with this, this council. So I can identify a couple that we may just want to be a little bit mindful of because they're so impressive and so successful. They have a lot going on. So perhaps they would be better in an associate capacity. So they don't have the same, you know, commitment.
I would almost rather, because I think sometimes the people with most plates are the most effective. I would rather almost do it as when the resumes came in. I don't know if Sherry can do that because I don't know how to, I don't, otherwise I really don't know how to.
And can I make a suggestion?
Counselor Butt? Yes.
Yeah, I had my hand raised for a while. So can I, can I?
My apologies, Counselor, but I was speaking, but Counselor.
Can we?
Get you now. Yes.
Can I make a recommendation that maybe we take item nine A? Do we do two first? So we appoint whoever your, whoever the adult advisor is, and we vote on that. And then just like we've done for the, you know, other committees, we kind of let the advisor come back to us and make the recommendations. I feel really uncomfortable with, and you like making suggestions on how busy folks are, especially high schoolers and voting on that. So I feel like we vote on the advisor and like we do with our other committees, we kind of look at the recommendation and they come back to us with whatever the recommendation is and who's full members. I love making associate members because non-voting members, I think if kids want to be involved, if young people want to be involved, this is why we created them. But I really think that's the job of the adult advisor is to kind of also tell us, based on the discussions it sounds like you've had. I don't, is Catherine who we're thinking of being the advisor?
She is.
Okay. Cause I don't think, was that in the package? I don't even know.
It was not. No, it was not. No.
So I'm going to recommend that we vote on that first and then we, we ask Catherine to come back to us at a future meeting with recommendations.
All right. Well, just a point of clarification. Catherine has reviewed all of these. And when, when I say maybe overcommitted in a lot or maybe overcommitted as well, those are, those are what Catherine came back to me with. I'm not identifying the people at this point. I think perhaps Vice Chair Santos, your suggestion is a good one. Another thing that we could do is just agree on, on a slate of the first eight that we received. We make them the voting members. The other two are associate members. I don't, I actually don't know when they came in. I believe, obviously Madam Clerk would know that. I don't know when they came in. I don't, I don't believe anyone knows when they came in. But that's just a very arbitrary way of doing it. Again, everyone is going to have tremendous engagement with this council. So I, I think that that, that would be a fine suggestion. And if you want to make that motion and someone wants a second, we could also go in that direction.
Yeah. I, I mean, I have no problem moving that the first eight resumes that came in can be the voting members. And the two, nine and 10 can be associates. And if there's, you know, if, when Catherine meets with a group and there's a huge discrepancy or there's some big issue, she can always come back to us and we can switch folks out. That's, you know, but just to get, get it up and running would be nice tonight.
And just to be clear too, we anticipated that this, this is just to get it up and running. And in fact, and the materials provide this, going forward, we'll be asking for the input of the youth council in terms of who should be appointed because these are yearly appointments. So we'll have that. So this is kind of a one-off. There'll be interviews and the like that they will be conducting going forward for, and then make your recommendations to this, this body in the years to come. So with that, we have a motion then to appoint the first eight as voting members, the other two as associate members. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Second by Counselor Chines. Any further discussion on that? No, all right. So seeing none, the motion before you then is we are voting to a, a point, the, the first eight in time applicants as voting members to the youth council to fill the high school roles. The other two would be associate members of that, of that youth council. And so we'll take that first. So with that, Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
The Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski? Yes. So that is a vote of seven to zero. That motion carries. And Madam Clerk, if we could just make sure we identify those votes and we'll provide that to everyone at the next meeting to let them know.
Mr. Chair, sorry, can I just ask a question on the appointment process? In terms of the middle school applicants, are we still accepting, I'm assuming we're still accepting?
That's actually what I'm going to get hit next. Exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
So now, so we, that we've covered the high school, we have three middle school slash junior high students. I spoke with, with Catherine about that and she's going to be speaking to some folks, try to generate some interest. So I would just, with, with the blessing of this council, we would be able to repost for that. And then Madam Clerk will have another date for that. So if it pleases this body, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Chines. Seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Do I have any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski? Yes. So that is a seven to zero. That motion carries unanimously. Item nine A two is for the council to consider nominating or appointing an adult advisor to the youth council. I had, I worked on creating this youth council with, with several very talented people, one of them being Catherine Dingra. Mr. Mayo has spoken with Catherine about, you know, her interests. She is already very much involved with, with our youth within the community. She's willing to do it. And I think the consensus, and Mr. Mayo, please chime in, I think the consensus of those of us who met to form this thought that she would be an excellent candidate for it.
Yes, I agree. Catherine would be fabulous.
She does a lot with youth action already. And again, she, she quickly knew all of the, all of the individuals we're talking about here. So I think the fact that she has that relationship and she's the only person in town that I'm aware of that has that kind of, you know, town, youth student connection. So with.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint Catherine Dingra as the adult advisor for the youth council.
All right.
Second.
So motion, the motion before you by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos, is appointing Catherine Dingra as the adult advisor to the, the youth council. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
We. Mr. Chair.
I apologize, discussion. Do we have any discussion on that? Counselor Butt?
Yes. So, so just two things. I just, I hope in the future we kind of vote on the, the advisor before we do the folks. I think that would have been the, the normal way to do that. I would have, hope in the future we do that. And then I also, I just want to take a moment to recognize Counselor Julie Smith Galvin, who came up with this idea over a year ago at a, at Parrot University. It was her and Ann Fortier. And I just want to recognize them for meeting with the kids and having this idea. I don't think she's getting properly acknowledged for this being one of her initiatives. So thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin, indeed. Do we have any other discussion? So all right, seeing none, then we'll take the vote at this time then. So we'll begin with Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin? Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski? Yes. Seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for that. Next is item number nine B, the Veterans Advisory Board. We have one applicant that has submitted having interest in being a part of this, this, this board. I'll remind this body that we have an unlimited number of seats on, on this board. And in fact, you remember that Jay Panett, several meetings ago, had expressed, you know, real interest in trying to make this a more robust board. And so with that, I will entertain a motion for the appointment of Mr. Michael Owen to the Veterans Advisory Board, if it pleases this body.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Do I have any discussion on this? Seeing none, the motion before you counselors is the appointment of Michael Owen to the Veteran Advisory Board. All those in favor with a roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski? Yes. Seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. And Michael Owen joins that board with our thanks. The next item on the agenda is item number nine C. This relates to the Conservation Commission. You recall that back at our April 13th meeting, we had two appointments to the Conservation Commission. Since that time, we have had one of those appointees resign from the commission, which means that a vacancy has been created. I'll remind this body that this is a statutorily defined commission as relates to how many members. So again, we have one vacancy with respect to that. And we have two options. And I presented, I presented to you as such, speaking with, with Town Council EL, Mr. Mullin, we can either pull from the existing pool or we can post and re-advertise for applicants. Now, the one applicant from last time has indicated an interest in being appointed. The other applicant we reached out to last week, Madam Clerk reached out to, and we've not received a response back on that. So that would be the quote unquote pool. That's why you only have one resume in here because we only have one confirmation. If the other applicant had confirmed, then we would have subsequently forwarded his resume and materials as well. That said, the other option is for us to go ahead and repost. And then we would, the, the prior applicants can either let the Madam Clerk know that they're interested in reapplying or simply reapply. And anyone else obviously could also reapply. And then we would have that appointment filled at a later date. I suggested to this body that we do the latter and we repost the position, see who applies and then reappoint from there. But again, I wanted to be sure that everyone understood that there were two options available to this body. And I would entertain a motion supporting my suggestion, but if someone feels differently, then that's okay too.
So with. Chair, and I'll make a motion to support your concept of reposting the position.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay. So just to be clear then, anyone that is, that is reapplying or has applied should reapply or let Madam Clerk know that they're interested in being under consideration. And then anyone new can certainly apply after it's been posted. All right. So that's been, that motion has been made and seconded. Do I have any further, any discussion on that? All right. Seeing none, we'll go through again. I'm sorry, roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Dinoco?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Aye.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
And Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski? Yes. Okay. So that is a seven to zero. There was one, a point of clarification I wanted to make in relation to this process going forward. And I know that this is a somewhat new process in that we're further engaging a lot of the membership of the various commissions, committees and boards in weighing in on, on the applicants. And one thing that I think we can, we can take from this most recent appointment is it's very important for all of our committees, commissions and boards to please not make recommendations until the application process has closed and you've actually received the applications. In this instance, the advertising of these positions, of the position for, for Conservation Commission was back on the fourth of February, but applications were not due until March 11. So that means that whole window of time, anyone could apply. Unfortunately, the Conservation Commission at a meeting on February 13th decided to make recommendations relative to appointments for that commission. And they sent a letter to that effect the following day on February 14. The problem is that that decision was made almost six weeks before they received all of the applications. Because the applications actually weren't received and you have the committees, boards or commissions until March 25. So when we have a body that's making recommendations on the 14th, on the 14th of February for openings that, that remain open until they close on the 11th of March, it, it becomes problematic because it's impossible if they didn't receive the resumes until March 25 for the Conservation Commission to have considered the other applicants. So they only would have considered the two that were already on that body. So I would just ask that if all of our committees, our boards and commissions, and I get it, it's a new process. So I understand why some people, you know, you, it might get a little confusing, but it's just really important that if as a body, you're going to make any recommendations to this council, please do it after you've considered all of the applicants because they all are entitled to that opportunity. So thank you for that. And Madam Clerk, if you could just be sure that we repost for this position, that would be appreciated.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So with that, the next is the MSBA High School Building Committee. And this is something where having been engaged with these discussions with Mr. Mayo, Superintendent Lyons and a number of other folks within our town administration, we are really to a point now where fortunately, having been accepted into the MSBA program, there are a number of steps that we as a community have to take. And I defer now to Mr. Mayo to kind of talk a little bit about, you know, what that, what that committee looks like. And again, this is, this would be a vote that would be beginning the process of forming this very important committee as relates to the high school construction.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The SBA requires that the town, at every city in town, set up a, a, a school building committee. Now, we have a charter in Wakefield. We have the permanent building committee that will also be part and parcel of overseeing the, the building. But the school building authority does require a very specific committee be set up. And we need to set this up by June 1st. So some of these positions are, you know, person who's MCPPO certified, so it's a budgetary person. The local chief executive officer, which is the chair of the town council, the town administrator, school committee member or members, superintendent of schools, local official responsible for building maintenance, which is, you know, maybe Bob Sharoli or Joe Conway. Presentation of, representation of office authorized to, by, to. Presentation of, representation of office authorized to construct school buildings, which is a permanent building, school committee. But what we'd be looking for tonight is to advertise for members of the community with architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience to serve on this committee. And it can be one, it could be two, it could be three. There is no number required. And also, anybody else from the community who would like to serve on this committee. So what I'd like to ask the town council to do is that we advertise for this like we normally do, that they come in and that we discuss them with the super, I'll send over to the superintendent to get his feeling on it. And we can then move forward and have this into the SBA by June 1st. Again, hitting our milestones with them as we go along, just to make sure we stay in the program. So we would be pointing at the next meeting.
Right.
So I'm looking for advertising today.
Right. So this would be a posting. This is not a selection, obviously, because we don't have applicants as of yet.
No.
Seeing now, it appears that Counselor Denako has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, so Mr. Mayo. Steve, how many people are on this committee? Or is that indefinite number?
Well, there is no, there are certain required positions that they require. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. I would say 11 to 12 minimum. But, you know, one is the superintendent of schools, one is the, you know, one is the high school principal, one is the, you know, one is going to be a budgetary person, one is a member of the finance committee. They're very specific that the SBA requires.
So the citizens that we get, do they have to have the?
That is, yes, that is what they're looking for. Just like we did with Galvin.
So there can be no labor person on the committee?
They're looking for members of community with architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience, or they have a form that says "other." But they want, this is the SBA rule.
Okay, that's fine.
Background info and expertise.
Nope, that's fine. Thank you, I just wanted clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Denako. Counselor Smith Galvin.
On that. So we present them, and then the MSBA accepts them? Is that how it works?
Yeah, I've never seen them not take somebody. They just want to make sure that you have those credentials.
Is there an argument to be made to have people on there who has a direct interest kind of in the high school project? I'm thinking, you know, maybe WCAT, because they have a space in the current high school or something like that?
There is that "other" section, so yes.
Okay, so there are people who approach us who have an interest in the high school. For whatever reason, they should apply.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose also a question for you, Mr. Mayo, and for you, Mr. Mullen, would be, I don't imagine there's anything preventing this council from creating an ad hoc committee. So if there are a number of people who express interest who may not necessarily fit the SBA criteria per se, we could perhaps think about some sort of like an advisory committee or something like that as an option going forward. But this is really specific to, I mean, the MSBA is pretty specific to what they're looking for from a skillset perspective. But I think we could be open-minded to the idea of having some sort of advisory committee that's perhaps more encompassing, as you point out, Counselor Smith Galvin, to kind of capture a lot more of the sentiment of the town.
Right, this is just the requirement that you have this committee.
Vice Chair Santos.
To that point, Ed, I think perhaps, I don't know if it's an ad hoc committee, but at some point, the community has to be involved, like they did with Galvinize. So I think there's going to be a huge opportunity for the folks on the ground who might not fit some of the parameters of this committee, which is very specific. But there's an awful, there's definitely going to be an opportunity for folks to form the committee that needs to engage the community to show our support at future town meetings. So I think you're right, there's definitely a future for other kinds of committees on this.
Having spoken with, meeting with the MSBA when they made the announcement, Mr. Mayo, I mean, they were very detailed in terms of the level and extent of community involvement. And so they're.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This is, to your point, Vice Chair Santos, you know, the Galvin is a great example of that. But everyone will have their voice heard and heard many times throughout this process. And it's really designed to function that way. So if I don't have any other hands up, then I'll entertain a motion for the approval of posting for this committee as required by the MSBA as our next step in this high school journey.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Denako. Do we have any further discussion?
Can I just add something, Steve?
Of course, Counselor Butt.
Even Sherry, when we do the posting, can we get to the point where we say what the obligation looks like? So, you know, hourly, once a month? I know we don't know, but any guesstimate? And meetings will be at night, and, you know, monthly? I think we, to get in the habit of doing that with our volunteer positions, I think it's just, it's a, we'll get newer folks who are interested. But I think, like, reading this, I would have no idea what the commitment is. And I think that deters a lot of people from applying. So as much.
Yeah, in this case, this will be a, these committees on school buildings, when you're going through the process, are very robust during certain periods of time.
So I think as much as we can put that in the posting and maybe use what we did for making the Galvin of, you know, it was weekly meetings and they laugh, you know, anywhere from three to six hours or whatever. I'd rather overcommit, but I actually want that as part of the posting, if possible.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all right, so the motion to get before you is the approval of the posting for this MSBA committee. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Denako.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin. Counselor Butt. Okay, I saw mouth, yes, and then Counselor May.
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for posting that position. Or I'm sorry, for that committee. Item 10 is union contracts. We have police, fire, and supervisory union contracts. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mayo, who's been in active negotiations for many months on those three.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the council knows, that we had three of our unions that our contracts are up on June 30th. And I hate doing things retroactively, although sometimes we do. But I am happy to say that in all three instances, these three unions, although because of the COVID-19, they aren't all completely ratified. But I've spoken to the chairman of each unit, chairman of each, representative of each union, and they're all ready to go and very comfortable that these are going to happen. And they're on our ballot at town meeting or on our agenda at town meeting. And I think they are all very good contracts for the town, fair for the unions. I actually had forecast, they came a little bit lower than I forecasted, and I have the three-year cost of each contract out there. I'll go through all of them at once, because they are pretty much all the same. They're all from July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2023. Consistent with every other union in town that we have negotiated with, the cost of living increases are a split 3% in fiscal year 2021, meaning one and a half on July 1st, one and a half on January 1st. In July of 2021, the second year of the contract, that would be a straight 3%. And in July of 2022, that would be a 2.5%. That's all the same for all three contracts. In the police contract, there is a half percent for specialized training compensation. That's an item that's already in there. There are no other, and that's half percent every year, except for the third year where it's 1%. There are no other monetary items in that contract. Fire is the same exact items. There's a half a percent increase for each emergency medical training position, whether they're a first responder, EMT, or paramedic. That's for the first two years, half percent, then one in the third year. There is also going to be a stipend position for emergency medical services director and coordinator. And I think that that position during the COVID-19 issue has been really huge in making sure they have all the PPEs and everything and coordinating with the ambulance services. On the supervisors' contract, it is a straight three-year. As we mentioned, there are really no other changes other than the cost of living increases. The fire, excuse me, the police contract is $140,000. The fire is $135,000 in year one. And the supervisors is 60, at being a smaller union. They all come in, and there was a memo that went out to you all. They all come in very modestly in there. And a great give and take with our unions. And I would love to see them move forward tonight so we can get them approved at town meeting in June, when we have. Total budget increases in all of these are, you know, 2.5% for the police. Fire was four, but remember, we added overtime before. And supervisors is all spread over, but it's less than 3%. Very quickly, but if there's any questions, I know you guys had this for a while.
In fact, we have had, you know, this information for some time now. But does anyone have any questions for Mr. Mayo? All right, yes, Counselor Denako.
Just a point, a question for Mr. Mayo. Can they all be covered on the one vote, or do we have to vote them separately?
I think, I think we could record them separately, but you could do them all under one vote to save time.
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make one.
So I will entertain a motion whereby we will vote on all of them as one unit, but will consider them as having been three separate votes, if that pleases this body.
As presented by Mr. Mayo?
That's correct.
I'll make that motion, sir.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, so motion made by Counselor Denako, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and the motion before you is, as already outlined, as relates to the police, fire, and supervisory unions. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Denako.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayo, for all of your work in negotiating those. I know that that was many months. And thank you also to the unions for being so cooperative in those discussions.
Very, very good group of individuals, love the town, and they work hard for us. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Indeed, yes, thank you for that. Item number 11 is town-owned land. This, I will turn over to Mr. Mullen. This was, this relates to 28 Redfield Road. This was a piece of property that, again, is on the Wakefield Reading line. We have already approved requests in relation to this property, but there are some nuances now that I'll turn to Mr. Mullen to describe to us, and then we'll all entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Happy Groundhog Day. I'm back to talk about 28 Redfield Road. So the last time the council discussed this matter, you agreed to reduce the overall purchase price from $151,100 by the sum of $14,500. That figure, $14,500, was a conservative estimate of the cost that would be incurred by Cara Mead, the purchaser, for tearing down the existing building because of the encroachment, which none of us knew existed at the time that the parcel was advertised. However, a condition of the council's vote was that the town of Reading share ratably with the town of Wakefield in this $14,500 reduction. And when I say ratably, the vast bulk of this parcel is in Wakefield. So Reading would only be responsible for something like 13% or 14% of the reduction. Reading is not unwilling, however, they have a mechanical problem, we don't. They can't deal with this issue except by town meeting. We have a bylaw in Wakefield that allows us to dispose of tax titled land without having to go to town meeting and without having to go through the public auction route. Reading does not. And therefore, they can't address this until November. So Steve came up with, I thought, a very good idea. How about if Ms. Mead were willing to, in effect, eat Reading's share? And she said she would be willing to do that. And therefore, what is now proposed is the, a reduction on the part of Wakefield from what we would have gotten, which is about $130,000, to a reduced price of $117. But the Reading portion of the reduction is going to be absorbed, not by Reading, because they can't mechanically deal with the issue now, but by Ms. Mead herself. And so instead of enjoying a $14,500 reduction, she'd get a reduction of about $12,500. A lot of numbers, I know, but basically, the whole purpose here is to effect the reduction of price that you've already approved and to waive the requirement, which made good sense at the time, that Reading share ratably in it. Instead, Ms. Mead is going to take Reading's share. She is going to absorb that reduction herself.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mullen. Do we have any questions of the council? Seeing none, then, I'll entertain a motion as described by Mr. Mullen that would affect the reduction in price and a waiver of the requirement that Reading also participate, as described by Mr. Mullen, and as previously approved by this body.
So moved.
Second.
So, all right, moved by Counselor Denako, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you as relates to Redfield Road is, as just described. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Denako.
Yes.
And Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Motion carries, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mullen, for that detailed description and for all your work on that.
Thank you.
I think Tom comes in front of us again. He has to sing a song about this issue.
Absolutely. We, I think we can have an informal motion to that effect, indeed. Next item on the agenda, item number 12. This is a quick item, but it relates to surplus equipment. This is equipment that is, that the DPW is requesting to auction off as surplus equipment no longer needed by our town. Mr. Mayo, if you have anything to add? If not, we can go right to a motion.
No, Mr. Chairman, this just allows us to get some money for some of this equipment. It goes back in, and Joe's actually had very good luck. And you pick up a few thousand here and there, it starts to add up at the end of the day, so.
And again, the details are in the packet and available to everyone online that goes to our town website. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the sale of the surplus equipment as identified in the package.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos. I'll give it to Counselor Chines, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you, the sale of surplus equipment. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Denako.
Yes.
Vice Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And Counselor May.
Yes.
And Chairman Donbrowski, yes, seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is a really great item. It's the farmer's market. And I believe we have Mr. Rob Darnell, who is joining us this evening to give us just a brief overview of the farmer's market and the requests before us. We have, again, a lot of information in our packets that are available to everyone to access online. But with that, do we have Mr. Darnell available?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Yes, good evening, how are you?
Hey, good, thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming. So we have a pretty good sense of the farmer's market. I know you have a brief PowerPoint, if you could just briefly walk us through it.
Yeah, so, hi, yeah, so I'm presenting for the farmer's market. Hang on, just waiting for the slides coming up. I can't see the slides properly.
We do see it on our screen.
Oh, okay, all right. I'd just like to start by thanking all the volunteers who turn up on Saturdays to help set up, to clean up, to clean up and to run the market, the market tent. Without our volunteers, this market wouldn't be a success. I'd like to thank our new market manager, Emery. She's had a great first year, a lot of support from Wendy Dennis. And I'd like to thank the town of Wakefield and our local banks for their support and sponsorship of the SNAP program and other events. And then, next slide. In the pack you have the finances for two thousand nineteen. We should, we show a small profit, which we will be using in our effort to support the health and safety of the community for two thousand and twenty. We fully funded our market manager's salary, which is making our markets self sustainable. The events and the SNAP program was sponsored by our local banks. What would a twenty twenty market, farmer's market look like? Unfortunately, it would be a lot smaller. We would, we would only be having meat and dairy products and bread. This, this Massachusetts Department of Public Health has guidelines that we have spelled out the basic ones here, there are a lot more and they are changing weekly. Social distancing, no dogs. We'd like one person to come to the market. We're only going to be allowed a few people in at each time. And the next slide. For the first three weeks, we're proposing to have pickup only. The farmers will have online ordering or a pre-packed box that they can order and pick up. The first three weeks would only have ten vendors selling veg, meat and grains. And after the first three weeks, additional vendors could be added. There will be hand washing stations, the area will now be roped off for crowd control. There will be no public toilets. The market tent will have a clear screen in front of it to keep the volunteers safe while dealing with the SNAP or market bucks. All market staff and vendors will be wearing masks and gloves, no tablecloths, no samples, no music, no kids, no kids tent and no live food demos, unfortunately. We will still be running the SNAP program and senior coupons. Next slide. So this, this is just a rough idea. We're having weekly meetings and it's changing constantly of entering down by the boat ramp into a market which is fenced off. You walk through the market picking up your produce and then exiting at the other end, and we would have to have a volunteer at the entrance and the exit for crowd control. Next slide, please. And part of the guidelines is signage, so we're working on signage to clearly identify the all the requirements. And next slide. The Wakefield Farms website is being updated right now and it will have all the vendors and how to do the online ordering and help, a help section as well. In the packs, you have the contract, which is the same contract as the two thousand and nineteen. And that's all I have, so any questions? Oh. Ada, you're on mute.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darnell, I bet you worked throughout the year very hard on the farmer's market, thank you for that. Do we have any questions of the council?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Donal, I wanted to applaud you and Emery Galvin on an outstanding job last year. I look forward to the farmer's market this year. Going over all the material that you presented to us in the packet, it looks like you adhere to most of this border health regulations when you set up your guidance or plan for opening, so I commend you on doing that. I only have one comment, and that was the picture of the layout of the tents.
Yes.
Are you limited, do we limit you as to how much of the area of that you can use right now?
So this is a lot smaller area, we only have ten tents shown on here and the recommendation from some of the other markets was to have a straight line or an L to keep, to keep it clear.
Right, so, so knowing the market, I understand that certain tents, let's just say the seafood person
Yes.
brings a truck, a refrigerator truck, how many refrigerator trucks do you usually have? That would require them to have the parking lot available to them?
So, actually, the fish is probably the only one that has a refrigerator truck. The meats, people bring in large coolers with ice packs. The Dave's Farm, he has a large truck, which would need some space.
So my recommendation, sir, and it's only just from looking at this visually, could everything be pushed down closer to northbound and actually make your line go up towards the cemetery on the inland route? In this way here, you can still have them feed in, but they would exit along the lake instead of crossing back in front of the people.
Right, I see what you're saying.
I, I, I think it would draw people in. You could still set up where the power is, I would assume that the farmer's market is going to be setting up with the, near the power, all right?
We will need some, we will need some power, yes.
The outlets are there already for you, so you'd probably be in close proximity to the outlets. It's just an idea, I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just looking at it from overhead as to how it would look if you filtered everybody towards the cemetery and when they were done, you had that little pathway right next to the water that they can go right back to their, to their cars on and without even interfering with the public in the middle. So you'd be able to social distance a little bit better, in my opinion, but that's just an opinion.
I think, thanks for that, yeah.
But anyway, thank you, you did a great job on that.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Darnell, part of the sentiment we're trying to convey, and again, anyone that feels differently, please, please correct me, but make use of as much space as you need in this area to be able to be spread out sufficiently, so I, so as much drawn it out like this, I don't think you should feel compelled to have to be in as close quarters if it's going to be better for you to spread out. And again, that's, that's my, my opinion, if anyone feels differently, please express it, but I think we'd all be in favor of you using as much space as you think you need to make sure you can do this as safely as possible.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Darnell, thank you very much, I, you know, as I was reading through the packet this weekend, I, I'm so impressed with the efforts that, you know, you and your colleagues at the market made to come up with a plan that's sort of appropriate with the situation wherein and consistent with all of the state regulations that are out there right now. Really impressive work and, you know, thrilled that we're talking about having a farmer's market in two thousand and twenty, even if it's going to look different than it did before. I have just two sort of technical questions, which, Mr. Chair, I think may be more appropriately directed towards Mr. Mullen. The first is on the license agreement, section nine of it talks about the need for sort of a local nonprofit tent as part of the license for the farmer's market and, you know, clearly given sort of where we are in terms of social distancing seems impossible or unlikely this year, is that something we would need to modify in the license agreement or, you know, something that that kind of falls under the sort of acts of God interpretation of any contract?
Mr. Mullen on that one?
So what kind of change would you be thinking of there?
Well, so if I read the section correctly, it seems to require that the farmer's market have a table available for a community organization, which I, I don't think that we would want to hold them to this year, you know, because of the social distancing requirements. I don't know if because of that we would need to strike that section or if the governor's emergency orders would supersede that anyway.
Well, I think you could, if you don't want to require a local nonprofit site of this type, then I think you'd need to have a vote now to strike that from this agreement.
Okay, all right. The second question that I had is I, with regard to sort of the, the market rules and regulations, my assumption is that that's something that the farmer's market can decide to change during the course of the season. Again, thinking about if the governor's emergency regulations change, for example, let's say they, you know, we, we lift the requirement that you can't use reusable bags, is that something that the farmer's market would be able to change sort of consistent with state guidelines? Or are we sort of set in those, those market rules as we, as we vote for the license today?
Well, we need them to come back to us with any changes.
Okay.
Because the rules and the application form are an exhibit two and a part of this license agreement.
Okay. So maybe what I would suggest that we consider today is, is to approve the license agreement as presented with section nine, section nine stricken. But maybe ask Mr. Darnell perhaps that, you know, you come back at some point later in the summer so that we can reassess if there are any changes or updates that we want to make consistent with how state guidance has evolved. I mean, I, I hope that we can kind of have a conversation at some point later in the summer about potentially relaxing some of the, the rules and regulations that we're, we're looking at today.
Sure, yeah, so with our plan, we have three tiers. The first is the first ten vendors and then slowly adding more after the first three weeks, depending on what the guidelines are, so we, we could come back after the first three weeks and could give you an update and then change it as necessary, if that works.
I'm not too mad at you, Mr. Darnell, that we need to go into that. I think you, basically, this and I'll have this, our town council weigh in on this, but I think if we sign this, this, this contract, we can just make the modification that will just strike paragraph nine for the twenty twenty season only. And I think this really affords you the opportunity to, to change the composition of the market as, as, you know, circumstances change. Obviously, a very fluid circumstance now, and I don't want you to feel like you're constantly having to come back, but if it's something very material, it would make sense, but I think otherwise, the sort of nuances you're talking about, about perhaps expanding vendors or moving your tables, this sort of thing, I think you have the authority to do that based on what we're, we're allowing you to do, unless, Mr. Mullen, you feel differently.
And, and, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think my intention was just more of sort of a large scale changes, I, you know, I know you have sort of the tiering of vendors and I certainly don't want the town council to be micromanaging who's coming to the council, but, you know, thinking about, do we get to a place later in the season where we can have entertainment? Do we get to a place later in the season when we could bring back? And, you know, if it's, if it's safe and inconsistent with sort of the state requirements to do so, the community organization tent, I think things like that that are more around just the, the structure and sort of the way people interact with the market rather than, you know, any of sort of the, the week by week decisions that, you know, you guys should be making without us on, you know, vendors and so forth.
So perhaps then just to have that flexibility, and number nine, we could just say something to the effect of stricken, less further determined by, you know, the, the farmer's market and their discretion for two thousand and twenty, or something like that, just to be broad with it so that they don't have to be coming back on the regular. Mr. Mullen, does that work for you, if we just did something like that?
Well, I think if you just strike it, then that leaves the farmer's market with the discretion, whether to allow such a site or not.
True, okay, good point. Anything else? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion then for the approval of the farmer's market contract as provided to us also in the packets, with the understanding we would indicate we're striking paragraph nine for the two thousand and twenty season only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines, roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes, vote is seven to zero, the motion carries with our approval and well wishes for a good year ahead.
Thank you.
Give it to Donal.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item number fourteen, which is a banner request from the Wakefield Elementary Schools congratulating Wakefield's fourth grade moving on class of two thousand and twenty. And I'll entertain a motion for that banner to hang over Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Donato, any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is for this banner request as defined, Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes, motion carries seven to zero, and congratulations to our fourth graders moving on. Next is item number fifteen, this is an inter municipal agreement and it's before our, our body to approve an agreement between us, the town of Wakefield and the town of Reading related to school nutrition director. Mr. Mayo, did you have anything to add relative to that? I know the information is already in our packets. We've all presented.
No, the, the reason why it's here is because all of these intermunicipal agreements need to be approved by the town council, even though this is a school related matter, but I do believe the school business manager, Christine Bufagna, is on the call.
Indeed she is, yes. Good evening, Ms. Bufagna.
Good evening, councilors, thank you for taking this up tonight. Yes, just to go over this, this is a renewal of a three-year agreement that's been in place between the town of Reading and the town of Wakefield to share the services of the food service director between the two towns. It works very well for both municipalities, for, for both towns, and we share the economies of both Wakefield and Reading and we share collaboration of procurement, meal planning, menus. And we have a director, her name is Danielle Collins, she came to Wakefield in October and she's been quite well received. She's jumped right in with our food program for our feeding our families during this pandemic. As you know, we feed families on Wednesdays and we just want to look to renew our agreement with Reading to share the services of this director between both towns. It works quite well because unfortunately, with our current arrangement of our department, we wouldn't be able to afford the current arrangement with a full-time director for Wakefield. Does anyone have any questions? I believe we have the whole agreement in your packet.
Indeed, we do, and again, this is available online for anyone who wants to review it as well. Do we have any questions for Ms.?
This was approved by school committee at the last meeting.
So this is a rather perfunctory approval unless we have any objections. Any comments, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion then for the approval of this renewal of the intermunicipal agreement for the school nutrition director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Donato, any discussion on this? All right, so the motion before you is the approval as described, roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Chairman Dombrowski, yes, motion carries seven to zero, thank you for that, thank you, Ms. Bufagna for staying online with us. Be well. Next item is item number sixteen on the agenda, this is committee updates, the opportunity for the committees that we appoint to be able to provide us with a brief overview of what they've been working on and where they're headed going forward. The first is our Clean Lake Committee that was formed back in September of this year. I believe we have our town engineer, Mr. Renaud, with us to give us that overview. Good evening, Mr. Renaud, thank you for your patience.
Oh, good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, councilors. Obviously, you got a big agenda still ahead of you, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. I do have a PowerPoint that I'll share right now with you all. I'm assuming you can see that screen now at this point. So, so I'm actually joined by Claire Moss, environmental manager and vice committee chair, as well as board member Bree Wiler Reynolds. And we're here to really talk about what we've been up to for the past few months. But first, I just want to give a quick thank you to all the members of the Clean Lake Committee for all their hard work over the past few months. We've been, we've been doing a lot of good work and really been a very collaborative effort, which has been enjoyable on my end. So as you mentioned, we were first, to give you a little background, we were formed back in September of two thousand and nineteen, charged with implementing strategies to improve water quality within Lake Q as well as other water bodies in town, while trying to align the committee's efforts with DPW's responsibilities with our NITDS program. After recruitment for at-large members, we began work in March of two thousand and twenty, hosting three public meetings to date. Our main focus has actually been on the Lake Q water quality and specifically work around the lake's watershed. What I'll do is I'll turn it over to Claire to talk a little bit about, you know, our watershed approach and what we've done to date, and then I'll hop back on to talk about a specific project.
Good evening, everyone, this is Claire.
Good evening, glad to be joining us.
Of course, my pleasure. So in essence, when we first started, we wanted to understand what previous committees had had completed before us, in addition to, as Bill mentioned, water quality regulations that Wakefield falls under. So the general consensus was that a watershed approach would be the most beneficial, which allows us to focus on what enters into Lake Quanapawat, not just what's already existing in it. It also makes us focus on treatment at the source of pollution, so that's looking at streets, that's looking at landscaping, rather than focusing specifically on maybe what's already going on Lake Quanapawat. This also falls under the NIPD's regulations, as Bill mentioned, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Next slide. So when we first started, we took a look at what existing public works projects we currently have, and we also asked the committee and anyone else participating in public meetings if they had any suggestions for additional projects. We ended up with about 10 projects from Public Works and about 15 from the committee, which we then compiled into a list that we, in essence, took a look at, we determined what our preferences were individually, we looked at different funding sources, and we rated projects until we had a complete list. We unanimously selected the Main Street Improvement Project as top priority, but we have other projects that range from trash management to tree planting to bylaw recommendations and changes and big infrastructure projects. And as I mentioned, because we unanimously selected the Main Streets improvements as the top priority, Bill is going to talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you. So, so as Claire mentioned, our, we identified Main Street reconstruction from Carriage Lane to Salem Street as one of our, as our number one priority. The stretch of road contains 19 outfalls that directly discharge to Lake Q, carrying some level pollutants, oil debris, and nutrients, et cetera. The color slide here shows the 19 individual watersheds that contribute to the lake in this stretch of road. It's oriented, the lake is on the bottom of the slide, Lower Common would be on the lower right-hand portion of the slide. And you'll see the watershed extends up even past Pleasant Street in some areas. We identified stormwater enhancements on this stretch as a perfect candidate for action grant funding through the MVP Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. The MVP Action Grants opened up in April for responses and can provide up to $2 million in grant funding per project for, for, you know, enhanced stormwater treatment. Obviously a great opportunity for the town of Wakefield. So after identifying the projects fit for the MVP program, DPW began to advance a preliminary design to determine what would be feasible for stormwater retrofits in the area, so we would be in position to apply for this grant when it became available. We determined that we could redesign the drainage to consolidate 19 outfalls into 10 outfalls and provide treatment at each of those new outfall locations. These treatment systems would include some of the items shown in this slide, bio retention areas, porous pavers, as well as tree box filters, and as well, as well as a planting of additional street trees within the section. Within the preliminary design, we determined a need to include four treatment units within the roadway shoulder. I will show where these are in the subsequent slide, but we're estimating that we would lose 15 parking spaces of a, of 188 total spaces along this whole stretch of road. And I'll show you where those are. This slide shows us metrics, which was something that I heard during the, the meeting that created the, the committee, is that we wanted to, that you wanted to understand what metrics we would be looking at for water quality improvement. So within the preliminary design, we included conservative calculations for nutrient reductions of these stormwater enhancements. So by doing what we're proposing, we would look, we would see 51 to 79% removal of the annual phosphorus load entering the lake in this section, and 67 to 89% removal of the nitrogen load. These are very, very conservative numbers, we expected to actually even go higher than this, and they're well going to exceed the upcoming DEP and EPA standards that should be issued in the next year or so. So looking directly into the plan and what we're looking to propose, so this is a section of, of Main Street from Carriage Lane to Lake Shore Drive, the Blue Bee and the Lake, and what we're proposing is the installation of a bio retention area between the back of sidewalk and the lake. In the photo, if you can see the slide, it's kind of weird with the, with the, with all of us sitting on the side here, but I have some examples of what that actually looks like. I don't know if I can really show you that at this point, let me see if I can, if I can, there we go. So if I should, actually, you know what, I'm not going to be able to really show you, I don't think, with the way this is working. All right, well, anyway. So we had a, so installation of some new bio retention area between the sidewalk and the lake. Within the Lake Shore Drive to Quarter Street section, we've identified three locations where we would look to install bio retention areas as bump outs within the roadways paved shoulder. So these will be the areas where we'd be looking to, to eliminate parking spaces. Again, these are non-delineated parking spaces, so, you know, that 188 is if everyone was to efficiently park, which really doesn't happen in that section. The reason that we have to go and bump in is because we have the retaining wall that's right at the back of the sidewalk in this area. So we really don't have a location other than, you know, this, this shoulder to, to do any treatment. Then from Quarter Street to Sweetser, we've identified one bump out that would be installed by Central Street, which could also serve as pedestrian access, as well as a bio retention area between the sidewalk and lake. Sweetser to White Ave, we have a small, a small bio retention area at the end of Aborn Ave. And then between White and White Ave and Salem Street, we would have a larger one, that little brown area to, to the, to the right of the slide there would be the gravel access to the Lower Common. And so that, again, would treat all 10 new outfalls that we would propose to install in the area. So before I, I turn it back over to Claire to talk about some of the other committee advancements that we've been working on, are there any questions on Main Street? I figure it's a lot of work and a lot of slides, so we take a second to pause for questions.
Do we have any questions? I don't believe we do, actually.
Actually, Mr. Chair, just to.
Apologies, yes.
No, that's okay, just a, a quick question. You know, thank you for going through this, this is really, really helpful to walk through and appreciate all the, the work that's gone into it. Just a question around pedestrian access, so I see you've got bump outs going into the roads which cut into parking. Obviously, the lake is used a lot from a pedestrian standpoint. Are there any impacts that you're envisioning, kind of positive or negative, to pedestrian access, sidewalk width, and things like that?
Yeah, so actually, we're looking at widening the sidewalk with a, with a infiltrative paver strip, so that's what's being shown in blue, that's, so this would effectively widen the sidewalk and eliminate what the grass strip is, so you'd have an ability to walk on it, but it still provides an enhancement from a water standpoint, because we can infiltrate more stormwater from it. And there is a, on the slide that's in your packet, you would, you'll see a, I can't get to it in this, you can't see it behind your, behind our heads, but there is a, a little detail that shows what it looks like and how we would widen it out and whatnot, so.
Great, thank you.
And I believe we also have Mr. Donakow with his hand up, if he could unmute.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. My questions are solely a little bit on the lines of Mr. Chines, but when we put these in play, that rubber strip that you're going to be putting in, isn't going to deter the amount of parking space that's on that side, is it?
It was, so we would be, so what we've, we've figured out is that we'd lose about 15 parking spaces in total, and they're really back around that bend area where the retaining wall is on Main Street.
Right, so where I'm looking right now between Wave and Lawrence, I see a blue line going down Main Street on the right, closest to the lake. That blue strip, that whatever it represents, that's not going to interfere with people that can park there, correct?
No, it will not interfere with them.
Okay. I, I love the concept of using the retentions systems, I think the planning board talked about that when I was on the planning board, as means of mitigating stormwater. I am thrilled to see that being put into place right now. Good luck on this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Donakow. Any other hands? Seeing none then, before we move on.
Sure, I'll throw, I'll throw it back over to Claire.
Awesome. All right, well, as many of you know, the MVP closeout and tabletop exercise was on March 12th, and in it, we focused on this particular Main Street project for the exercise and tested it against the MVP Framework Evaluation. In it, we came up with the following recommendations that the committee enacted, and I'll let Bree touch upon them a little bit more.
All right, thank you. So as far as the community outreach going into place by the committee, we have updated the webpage and contact information for the Clean Lake Committee. There's a showcase of previous committee reports, so you can see the history that Bill and Claire have talked about, the watershed information, the projects that we are working on, and the committee composition and our contact information. We also collaborated with the Environmental Sustainability Committee for an Earth Day virtual event, and that was also in collaboration with WCAT to promote the celebration of Earth Day and solicit drawings and pictures from local community kids, and just get the word out about the Clean Lake Committee and the work being done. We are also working with the Wakefield Daily Item to have a designated reporter who would be regularly updating on the projects and their progress, and the FOLQ Adopt a Rain Garden Program. That group mentioned that members are always looking for more ways to get involved, so we, they were suggested that if the CLC planted rain gardens or provided how-to information on planting rain gardens, that they may be able to maintain them, so as part of the projects, that will be a piece. And then the last thing we are also working on is a student liaison. So we have a motion to add a student member to the committee, and we've garnered some interest, but we wanted to confirm with the town council that we can move forward with that. We feel it's really important to have science from younger generations that didn't grow up with Lake Q being swimmable and fishable, which is sort of the overarching goal here, like their parents did, and also want to reach that wider audience of the younger generation in town, and feel that a student might be able to help with that. So that's something else in the community outreach.
Great, thank you so much for that, Ms. Reynolds. Do you have any further questions? Otherwise, next steps going forward?
Yes, hold on one second, there we go. So these are the, the next steps, and so Bill mentioned the Main Street project, of course. There are also projects related to the construction around the pickleball court, the watershed overlay district, the Gruuthund Spalding area, and 200 Quanapawat Parkway, and then an interactive project map that would sort of bring these designs to life and allow people to see the preliminary sketches and be able to interact with them so that they could really see things coming to life.
The questions are not, if anyone will be counsel. Now I'm seeing none. Actually, Counselor Smith-Galvin? Just to unmute, Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Sorry, I just want to say this is really good work done in a short amount of time, and I know that municipal vulnerability program there, we, we've done a couple of grants for them, so is, is the thinking that this will be the main grant for this round? Or are we thinking there might be some other things as well?
We plan on submitting, resubmitting the same grant application that we did in the fall with a couple of minor updates in addition to this one. We discussed with our MVP liaison, and she assured us that there shouldn't be any issue applying for two.
Counselor Donakow has the next question. If you could unmute, Mr. Donakow?
I'm sorry, once again, I forgot the mute button. Must be an age issue, I'm sorry.
We all do it.
So my question, it pertains to one of the, the slides that was shown about the overall watershed district. Is Walker Brook Drainage Canal part of that concern, or does that bypass the lake completely?
So this is the, an actual map of the watershed?
Yes.
And Walker Brook is in this general area, if I recall, right?
Walker Brook, in this case, is up to the very top. Oh, no, you're right, that's right, it's right, it's right where it says exit 39.
Yep, yeah, and so that is included in the watershed? And there's a, there is a culvert that feeds it through Fielding Street, if I recall.
So everything that's coming down, say, in front of the car dealership?
Oh, yeah.
It, it's all part of what's in, going into the watershed area that makes up Lake Quanapawat, correct?
Correct, and actually includes a portion of, of Reading, too. So the green section that you see, if I was to expand this map, includes Reading as well.
Okay, so that'd be a concern that I'd be worried about, because we don't know what's coming in from the Reading side. Okay, no, thank you.
Good, sure.
Thank you, Counselor Donakow. Counselor Butt?
Hey, thank, thank you, committee, for a great presentation, that was great, and just, I might have missed it, and I, I, but, and Steve, this is a question for you, I can't see everyone's faces for you and Tom, but how does this interplay with the Lake Structure Committee? Does it?
I think not.
Like our policy, it doesn't? I just.
I think it does.
Okay.
It's a sidewalk, it's not a.
That, that's what I was thinking, too. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing the appropriate, giving people notice, and I know that committee members have thought about that, but I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, it, that we're doing our due diligence and giving people notice about this.
Thank you for that question. Do we have any further questions of the council? Seeing none then, before we, we extend our, our thanks, there are two requests from the Clean Lake Committee as relates to what has been presented and mentioned this evening. The first is a motion regarding their, the Clean Lakes City project recommendations, and I actually have the exact language that I could read aloud, and then I will entertain a motion, that would then need to be seconded so we could act upon it potentially. So with that, Clean Lake Committee has proposed to us a motion reading. I move that the town council support the project recommendations from the Clean Lake Committee as presented, and further instruct Public Works to apply for action grant funding through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program for the Main Street Corridor from Carriage Lane to Salem Street. The project will provide much-needed water quality improvements to the town's most valuable natural asset, Lake Quanapawat. So that was a request of the Clean Lake Committee. I will entertain a motion as I've just read.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Donakow, seconded by Vice Chair Santos, do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none then, the motion before you is the approval of the request from the committee for the recommendations as I, as, as have been presented here. We'll do again a roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Donakow?
Aye.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second is, as the town council is the appointing authority for any of these committees, there's a request for a non-voting student liaison to be appointed to the Clean Lake Committee, I think to keep it clean and, no, no pun intended, and consistent with the way that we normally handle of this, I think we should vote as a body for the addition of a non-voting student liaison to this committee, and we can do that in conjunction, assuming that's approved, then we can do that in conjunction with the, the public posting to see applicants, so that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Donakow, any discussion? Seeing none then, the motion before you is the creation of a non-voting student liaison for the Clean Lake Committee, and then the, the, the publishing of it as we would have Madam Clerk do, the posting of that. So with that, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Donakow?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin? And Chairman Dombrowski, yes, that motion carries seven to zero. And with that, I would say, thank you very much, Mr. Renaud, Ms. Ms. Moss, and Ms. Reynolds for your incredible work, and as has been said, in a short amount of time, you've really done tremendous, tremendous job, and we're really excited about what, what lies ahead for this, this committee and your work. So thank you, thank you for, for educating the whole community this evening, giving us the.
Thank you for your time.
So much.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda is item 16B. This is a brief update from the Cultural Council, and I know that we have Caroline Lieber on this evening for the Cultural Council, do we have any other representatives? And Sarah Gurren as well. So good evening to you both, thank you for your patience and waiting.
Thank you for inviting us. And so, I'll keep it pretty brief. We were given some guidance from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, when all of this happened, that we should get in touch with all of the people who received grants from us, we had voted about $10,000 worth of grants to different organizations that we're going to be bringing.
different organizations that were going to be bringing arts and culture to Wakefield. And we were, our guidance was pretty, it wasn't super specific, which was great. So we sent a letter out to all of the grantees extending their grant period into 2021 and allowing them to write us to ask for any modifications that they might need to do with their projects. For instance, if they wanted to do something more virtual, to limit contact person to person, they could write us asking for that modification. And then, if needed, we would get together and vote for certain specific things. So we sent that letter out, got a lot of thanks from the different organizations that that received the grants. And that sort of sums up where our organization is right now.
That's great.
Sarah, Sarah actually is here, too. Sarah, do you have anything to add?
I do. Thanks, Caroline. The Mass Cultural Council has established an Artist Relief Fund, and for, they had 1,800 applicants and only 272 awards. And I know the National Artist Relief Fund had 55,000 applicants for 600 awards. And one of the things that the Cultural Council said is an option for the local cultural councils, if for some reason, some of the grant awardees are not able to either perform their programs or whatever we awarded the money for, we could, as a town, establish an Artist Relief Fund, which clearly there is a need for. And it's not something that we, as a group, have talked about yet because we're not there. We have to wait and see, I think, how many people request either time extensions or new creative ways to complete their proposals. But if we do end up going that option, if we have the money to do it, it's something that we would have to work in conjunction with the town with per order of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. So this is the first time you're hearing of it and may hear of it later on.
And any questions of the town council? I'll first say that you're doing some really tremendous work, so thank you for that. And I know that it's really, you're of great benefit to our town. There's a real value add to the work that you're doing. So you should be very proud of everything that the council is doing. So thank you. Thank you on behalf of the entire town. Do you have any questions or comments from anyone on the council? I'm not seeing any. I send along our sincere thanks and please just onward, continue the great work and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item number 17, Town Warrants. I'll turn that over briefly to Councilor Chines on that.
Thank you. So information, as always, is in your packet, but I did on April 28th, signed virtually, warrants numbers 36 through 40. Total was $11.2 million, mostly payroll benefits, as well as enterprise transfers and the like. Again, details are in the packet. And my sincere thanks to Mr. Mayo and Mr. Gill's team and Ms. Dalton for allowing me to sign and scan from home rather than having to come in and do it in person.
That's great. Thank you for that update. And again, as Councilor Chines said, that information is in the packets available to the public on our town's website. So if there are no comments or questions on that, we'll move on to the next item. Seeing none, next item is item number 18. This is constituent issues. This is your opportunity to raise any issues that you've inherited from constituents. I see Vice Chair Santos.
Yes, this was raised by a constituent, but not to me, as is typical. I think that it's fair for citizens to challenge our votes. It's fair for them to question our votes. What they cannot do is attack our integrity and suggest that some people on this board accepted money or follow the money trail for certain votes. They, I mean, in addition to being libelous, and it was a small amount, but they have a, you know, they put things in the papers, they put things on Facebook, which you all know, I don't look at the community page. I don't participate in that because of the venom. But I only want to spend about 10 seconds on it because those people are not even worth that. They are without character. They are pathetic. They are insignificant and irrelevant to anything that I am certainly concerned about for this town. And to suggest that we took money or to follow the money trail and for them to pretend that they were being sneaky about it and perhaps not saying that so blatantly is absolutely abhorrent. So that's my constituent issue for the day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. I see next we have Councilor Dinoco's hand up. Councilor Dinoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will echo the Vice Chair's comments there. I do agree with her 110%. If they had any class, it would make it, you know, the comments were unbelievable that we accept money. 20 years in public office and they still think that we make money. I want to see the proof. Just have them show me the proof that we're taking money. But let's get past that. The only issue that I have, and I want to direct this to you, from Mr. Mayo, have we handled all of the face masks distributions, to your knowledge, sir?
I would say at this point, 99, 98, 99%, there are still a few stragglers that are out there that are being called in. You know, could be missed by, you know, wonderful volunteers. It could have blown away. It could have, maybe someone else took it there. So we are, they will be all addressed this week. And we have a list running through the senior center, though they're being taken care of.
I appreciate that. I just, it's just been an ongoing concern and I keep directing them to the phone number, but of course, they all want to be on Facebook complaining to the wrong source.
Right.
But no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor Dinoco, any further constituent issues? Councilor Smith Galvin?
I'm not sure what the resolution is on it, but I did have an inquiry about with the vets parking closed, was, is there still any availability? I think some people are using the electric vehicle charger there. Again, I don't know what the solution is, whether maybe it's just that I threw it out there. Think about it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for that. Anything further? Seeing none, then, no others? Moving on to item 19, and this is Chairman's comments.
Mr. Chairman, Peter May had something.
Hand out.
I'm sorry, Councilor May? My apologies. If you could just unmute.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know it would like to hear my voice. I would concur with Ian and Paul. That the last couple of weeks, the articles and paper disgrace, disgusting heinous and libelous. And if there were cowards, people was talking about for a few, four minutes, but they're not. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor May? Have anyone else? All right. Seeing none, then, next item on the agenda is item number 19, Chairman's Comments. These were actually the last time you'll be hearing from me as Chairman. I wanted to just touch briefly on two things. One, we had a regional summit meeting last Tuesday night, and we had in total six communities that came together, all of our surrounding communities. And I think it was a really, really robust, important dialogue that we began. And I hope that that will be something that will continue in the months and years to come, certainly. Anyone who hasn't seen it, it's available to see online through WCAT. And I understand WCAT is also running that on their television channel as well. So if you want to catch that, that there's the opportunity to do that. But, and I do thank all the councils for taking part in that as well. And then my other, my other piece was, was a thank you. As I said, this will be my last meeting, running as, running it as your, as your chair because the one-year term has come to a close. So I did prepare very brief remarks that I wrote up in the interest of brevity that I just wanted to quickly read to the council and the community on that. So I appreciate your two-minute indulgence to do that. I was talking with my nearly 90-year-old grandfather a few months ago, and he asked me how things were going as a town councillor. I told him that I thought they were good. And he replied, if you're doing the right thing, that's all that matters. And I've never forgotten that. And councillors, what a year it has been. I unexpectedly came into this role as chairman, two years into my service on this council. And I conclude my term now via a Zoom conference meeting in the midst of a worldwide pandemic. I'd like to thank each of you councillors, though, for entrusting me with this leadership responsibility and supporting me in this position throughout the entire year. In May of 2019, I presented this council with an ambitious agenda I called Wakefield 2020 Vision, 40 priorities and goals. And I recall at the time, the Daily Item remarking that if even half were achieved, it would be a successful run. Well, I'm incredibly proud that we have far surpassed those expectations over this last year. I'm thankful to all of you for the support in advancing along many important initiatives through that bold agenda that I believe has and will continue to make a profoundly positive impact on the residents of Wakefield for years to come. And I look forward to working with all of you as we go forward to continue to carry on the many exciting projects we have underway and new opportunities that await us. We've also, in many respects, transformed the way that the business of the council is conducted. We've been more interactive. We've been more engaging, and we've been more transparent and processed with the residents that we all serve. Local government is a team sport if you're going to do it well. And Wakefield has an amazing all-star team. There are many people to thank, but I wanted to single out just a few. Thank you, Town Administrator Mayo, for your tremendous support throughout my time as chairman. Your insight, enthusiasm, and commitment to the W are simply unmatched. Your leadership, coupled with fantastic department heads and employees, and the brilliant Town Council SEL, Tom Mullen, make for an unbeatable nation. And Steve, you and I speak often, and we developed a very simple mantra from the beginning of our time together. Get stuff done. And you have certainly delivered on that mantra, so thank you. I also want to say thank you to Madam Clerk Sherry Dalton. Sherry, your dedication extends so far beyond the normal workday. You go above and beyond and are always available. You're sending emails late at night, early in the morning, and often on the weekends. Your commitment is unmatched and unfortunately is not as visible to the public, but please know it is so incredibly crucial. I also want to thank WCAT. WCAT, your team makes these meetings happen. And in the studio, and now in Zoom, it's because of you. You've always been so willing when I burst into the control room with an idea, and you've helped to create a far more interactive experience for those watching. And finally, I would like to thank, thank all of you, those watching at home, for your interest in the operations of local government. Our work may not always appear to be the most exciting, but I'd argue it's the most important because ultimately, the decisions that we make are some of the most meaningful to impact your daily lives. Thank you for reaching out. Thank you for asking questions. Thank you for being participants this past year. It matters. And so as we head to the next item on the agenda, the selection of a new chair, be assured that my commitment to you remains unchanged. I will work hard every day and continue doing the right thing and make you and my grandfather proud. So with that, we'll move on to item number 20 on the agenda. That is the Town Council Reorganization. We, every year, reorganize with a new chair and vice chair. The first will be nominations for the position of chairperson, item 28. So with that, I'll entertain a nomination for chair for the upcoming year.
I'll make a motion to elect Ian Santos as incoming chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So the motion on the floor is the election of Ann Santos as our next leader, our next chair, seconded by, made by Councilor Dinoco, seconded by Councilor Butt. Do we have any discussion? All right, seeing none, then the motion before you, and I'm assuming there are no other motions. So with that, the motion before you is, is the election of Ann Santos as our next chair. And this will be the final roll call vote that I'll be taking from all of you. So again, thank you. With that, Councilor May?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Councilor Dinoco?
Yes.
And outgoing Chairman Dombrowski, yes, enthusiastically. And I wish you the best of luck. Congratulations to you. The meeting is yours.
Thank, thank you. And before we go to the next motion, I just want to say, Ed, thank you for providing an unbelievable effort, what you've done in the past year in putting a form around things that sometimes always didn't have a form. So there are certain things I am looking forward to taking with your guidance as we move on. But I just want to thank you because I know the amount of thought you put into your ideas was truly sincere. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the election of a vice chair. And do we have a nomination for vice chair?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Councilor Smith Galvin.
Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Julie, okay. So any discussion? Hearing none, we will take a vote. And I've never, I haven't done a roll call vote like this, so following off of Ed's lead. Ed Dombrowski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Paul Dinoco?
Aye.
Peter May?
Yes.
Jonathan Chines?
Yes.
Maureen Butt?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And I certainly enthusiastically vote yes for you as being vice chair. So well done, everyone. We'll move forward. And, okay, any announcements or acknowledgements that folks have? And if you, I just, I'm losing the hand raising sign if you just want to put your hand up. Jonathan?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I'm sad to say that we have actually fallen behind Stonem in our census response rate. So, Madam Chair, just be prepared that if we don't pick that up in the next day or so, you'll be wearing Stonem spirit gear, I believe, at our next meeting. But just for folks in the community, we're at 73.9%, which is still very good. But Stonem's at 74.8, so let's try to close that gap. Please respond to the census if you haven't done so already. I know a number of us were slated to participate last weekend, or maybe the weekend before, at the Boys and Girls Club Dodging for Dollars tournament. That has been postponed until August 22nd, but just want to put the plug out there that they certainly can still use some support. They're doing a lot of great work in terms of helping our first responders. Love the fact that they're still serving their constituents, as well as putting their 3D printers to good use and making protective gear for Melrose, Wakefield, and for first responders. So encourage people to support them. And then finally, just wanted to mention, I'll be doing office hours on Facebook Live next Wednesday, the 20th, at 7 o'clock. So any residents who have questions, please send them, send those in beforehand or log into Facebook and be happy to talk, albeit via the internet. Thank you.
I'm muted.
I saw Paul and Maureen, and then Steve. I'll take, I think Maureen was first in the raise hand, hand raising.
Hi, thank you. So just, just a couple of things. We touched on it briefly. Paul mentioned it earlier, but I did want to take a moment and thank Steve and the team on the mass delivery. We were the first town, quickly, Melrose and Stonem followed your lead, Steve, but I just want to say unbelievable effort and such a great thing that we did for our town. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that. And that happened in between our two meetings and just how quickly and flexible you are. So thank you so much for that. I just want to also just recognize, like, how quickly we have been able to adapt to these Zoom meetings. So Everett, a town ann knows well, but Everett So Everett, a town Ann knows well, but Everett has gone two months since their city council has met, met their meeting tonight. They haven't met since March ninth. And I, last week participated in three of our committees Zoom calls. So you know, the Ace Cultural Exchange and Human Rights Commission, everyone's meeting via Zoom or via virtual. And I just, that is also, thank you, Steve. Thank you, our IT department. Thank you, WCAT, who's making that happen. And we, again, are handing, handling this crisis better than a lot of other places. Two, two, two other quick announcements. One, I drove by JJ Rounds and the Community Gardens are coming together. And Rob Darnell, actually, who spoke earlier, sent me a picture and then I went to confirm. And so thank you, DPW and Dan McGrath. I know we did not have the groundbreaking ceremony we expected, but we will have something hopefully this season. And so thank you for everyone that working on that. And my last announcement is I, I stop my video every so often because it's still Ramadan on Monday seventeen, eighteen. But we will meet after Eid. So I just want to wish everyone Eid Mubarak on May twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'm going to start off by congratulating Mr. Dombrowski on fulfilling his year in office and, and going out on top of things. You did a great job on pushing a lot of things forward. I know we didn't always see eye to eye. We butted a few, heads a few times, but we made it through the year without killing each other. And that's always a plus on this board.
It's a high bar.
All by a bar. That's correct. But no, I, I would like to just move on with, bring, making one small announcement, please. The Friends of Wakefield Small Business Fund is currently underway and it is a fund where we are trying to support small business owners who are suffering dearly due to the COVID crisis. You can find the site on Facebook. It'll give you a direct link to get to the patronicity crowdfunding location where you can make a donation. We are currently at own close to fourteen thousand dollars collected already. We still have seventeen days left to try to get to our twenty-five thousand dollar goal. So if you can find a way to support and you think that you couldn't live without one of the small businesses in this town, here's a way of helping them stay open and maybe pay their rent or pay their insurance bill put food on the table at this point. So if you can contribute, it, it would be a great thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Steve?
Yes, a, a couple of things. I want to thank the, the wonderful volunteers regarding the mask assembly and delivery and going back out and, and just the positive energy there. We had a hundred volunteers. At eight o'clock in the morning, there were seventy teachers there to help out, school nurses, our staff. And really, Judah Luciano has done a fabulous job in holding that all together and pulling it all together. So again, call the number if there's any questions because hey, we're only human and people could get missed. Number two, thank you for the comments on the Zoom meetings, but the person who really needs credit is Sherry Dalton, who has set that up with our IT department. And if anything goes wrong with those meetings, she's, she gets crazed. So make sure they go well. But no, no, she's done a great job in setting that up and she makes sure they're all going well. So I think she's attending a lot of meetings, at least making sure they get started well. And thank you to WCAT for working that out with us. And I think all of these meetings are available. So we're very transparent. People can see them everywhere. And lastly, I want to, I want to thank Ed for a great year as chair. He accomplished so much. And I told him when he came out with his forty points that God only had ten, but didn't he get, didn't he create a, a wonderful year and a wonderful year as chair? And the bottom line is, I think the town is better off. And Ed, you made me a better town administrator. So thank you for all your hard work and your support. Thank you.
Steve, thank you.
Seeing no further comments?
One more comment, Madam Chair.
Go. Yep. I'll go to Julie and then Paul, back to Paul.
Okay. So just quickly, I hear though, I haven't confirmed, but it sounds like the municipal solar is going to start going up. The panels are in, so I just wanted to point that if anybody sees any activity around the, the water department by Crystal Lake. Luckily, the order was done before COVID and we're not going to be held up, which is good because I don't think that there was going to be any budget that was going to be rolled over this year. So.
It's going to be a problem.
Paul, you had a final comment?
No, no, I do not. Peter May does.
Excellent. Peter. Oh, I'm mute.
There we go. Hey, so Ed, I want to say thank you for your service this year. You serve honor and distinction. Now I can't pass it. To like Ann, Julie, this coming year.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no more hands, we'll move on. Oh, Ed, sorry. Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, best of luck, Ann and Julie, I think, for a dynamic team. And I know that there are great things ahead for the town. You're both probably committed to, to making sure that, that, that this is a great place to live. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item twenty-two, matters not anticipated for the agenda. I'll take the first one. And we heard from Isabel Castro with regard to the pride flag flying for Pride Month in June outside the American Civic Center. Because they didn't quite meet getting on the agenda for the official vote today, I believe we can take a vote and then ratify that vote May twenty-eighth at the next meeting and have the flags in place for Pride Month. I also want to acknowledge that based on our policy, that we can waive the part, or we can vote to waive the section of the policy that suggests, that states that in order to fly a flag, you must have an event happening in the Civic Center. Obviously with regard to COVID-19, there, there can be no events. So I would ask that we waive that part, that section of the policy in order to allow HRC to raise the pride flag for Pride Month.
Don't move, Miss Manager.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Peter May.
Yes.
Jonathan Chines.
Yes.
Maureen Butt.
Yes.
Julie Galvin.
Yes.
And yes, for myself. So unanimous for waiving that section. And now let's have the vote to have the flag raised for Pride Month and the vote will be officially ratified May twenty-eighth. Can someone, moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Maureen. Paul Dinaco.
Yes.
Peter May.
Yes.
Jonathan Chines.
Yes.
Maureen Butt.
Yes.
Julie Galvin.
Yes.
Ed Dombrowski.
Yes.
And yes, for me. So again, unanimous vote to have the pride flag raised for Pride Month outside of the American Civic Center. You hung in there, Isabel. Thank you. Any other matters not anticipated for the agenda? I can see hands now if anyone wants to raise them. Oh, come on. It's not eleven yet, people. Okay. Would anyone like to move for enjoyment?
So move, Madam Chair.
Moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jonathan. Roll call. Ed.
Aye.
Yes, for myself. Paul.
Yes.
Peter May.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Maureen Butt.
Yes.
Julie Galvin.
Yes.
Excellent. And I just want to raise that the next meeting is May twenty-eighth at seven PM. That, based on that we're all Zooming, that time, I'm going to throw out there that perhaps we could meet earlier. So I'll be in touch with all of you just to ask if that works. I've already, WCAT did say they can roll with that. Okay. Thank you so much. Ed, thank you for a wonderful year as chair. Thank you all for, all eighteen on the Zoom call for sticking in with us and those watching at home. Have a wonderful night. Take care.
Your man, all.
Amen.
Night.